Okay, just sorry about that everyone. Welcome to the October 5th, 2021 Town Board Work Session and Meeting to follow. Can I have a motion for the work session, please?
I move to open the work session. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we're kicking off this evening with the FGIS and where we are right now in terms of the review. Ed or Jill, do you want to lead us off?
Sabrina is actually going to walk the board through the red line pages that appeared in the packet and that were also circulated earlier today.
Okay, can you guys hear okay in the crowd?
I can't hear anybody.
Pull it a little closer to you.
Test.
Yeah, pull it closer.
I think we all sound. Can you hear me?
So wait, let me turn over.
I feel like we're all.
Okay. It's alright.
Doing a lot of exercise today.
Yeah, are you counting steps?
Steps, yeah.
Talk again. Hello, hello. Yeah, I think it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, it seems better.
Does?
Yeah, okay. So for fans at home, Sabrina, you're leading the charge. Sabrina, can you hear me? That's not a good sign. Sabrina, can you hear me? Yes, okay.
Yes, I can hear you.
Alright, sorry about that. Some difficulties. Alright, Sabrina, take it away, please.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen for a minute. Good evening, everyone. And I, my apologies for not being there in person tonight. Just give me a moment. Okay, here we are tonight, October 5th, and tonight we're going to discuss the final generic environmental impact statement that we've been discussing, been discussing for several meetings. Tonight, we're going to, just to, I'm going to go through a couple of slides that are going to remind you where we are in the process and then focus in on the most recent red lines that you received between last Friday and today. Just to remind everybody that the final generic environmental impact statement provides responses to all substantive comments that have been received during the hearings and the written comment period. We have also been responding to comments that we have received throughout the review of the FGEIS and the red lines. So just, I think it's important for people to know. The FGEIS, one of the most important aspects of the FGEIS is setting forth thresholds and mitigations that are derived from the impact analysis. So, and the environmental record. So that's, that's kind of key. And in the actual document in its entirety, in the introduction and in the sections, you will see those thresholds. Just to refresh everyone's memory, these are all of the different sections, from land use to hazardous materials to miscellaneous examination of alternatives. This is what composes the generic environmental impact statement. And each of these sections contains an analysis, both in the, in the draft generic environmental impact statement and then the response comments in the FGEIS. The FGEIS also includes additional studies that have been appended to the FGEIS that may resound within each of these sections. Not every section has an additional study, but there was a need in order to adequately respond to comments to conduct additional analysis. Just to remind you, we're in the middle of a completeness review. And one of the, the benchmarks of a completeness review is an examination of the DGIS and the comments and the responses and question, do the responses adequately and accurately address the comment? And tonight, we will be discussing red line pages and you've received several installations of red line pages. What is a red line page? It is where we have changed the content of the FGEIS, the comment, the response to the comments and have submitted different sections to you over the past several meetings. Tonight, we're going to talk about school tax generation and potential budget impacts. And with me here tonight is Bonnie Von Olsson from the consultant team and she will jump in and add information and comments that she sees fit as I go through this tonight. But please, by all means, feel free to jump in, Bonnie, if you feel the need. Ultimately, the discussion tonight is going to focus on Section 2H, Community Facilities and Services, and Section 2I, Socioeconomics. I want to start out by saying that, you know, one of the most frequent comments we received was about understanding the tax implications of the full buildout analysis. Typically, undertaking a financial analysis would involve looking at each individual property under the maximum buildout scenario. And in order to effectively understand the tax implications, we would have to make numerous assumptions which would yield unreliable results. And that is really just based on the way we tax property today. We tax property based on its use. And without knowing what the future uses will be specifically, it's hard to drill down to that exact number. So ultimately, doing something like that is based on speculation as to how particular properties might be developed in the future. There's a lot of assumptions and unknowns if we were to do that. It is also important to note that this type of analysis is not a requirement of seeker. It, it would not assist the lead agency yourselves in assessing potential adverse environmental impacts. So with that said, I just wanted to lay that foundation. In order to adequately respond to comments, we thought we would come up with a generalized tax estimate. Now, this estimate is based on a methodology that we put together to really trying, in a general sense, understand, yes, we know tax rates increase over time. We assume that based on increasing the number of residential units, the commercial uses, the civic units, there will be more taxes generated. We actually took it a step further to try and put a number around it to bring it down to a, a an equal playing field, if you will. You know, we, we, we assumed 997 new residential apartment units. And this broke down to thirty, 332 two-bedroom units and 665 one-bedroom units. They are all market rate. In our methodology, we said we, it would be too difficult to, to look at anything other than market rate units at this time. The last bullet on this slide says no adjustment was made for 10% affordable units. You have to understand that when it comes to an affordable housing development or a mixed income development, each one of those developments addresses affordability individually. They all, they do it, the calculations, the analysis that they use is all different. It's not one size fits all, which why, which is why we did not include it in our methodology. We included the 2019 tax generation that was referenced in the DGIS of $2,784,619. We added that amount into our generalized tax estimate. It's important because the commercial, that number in 2019 was really based on a majority of commercial uses. Yes, there were roughly 107 residential units within that tax number, but for the most part, the majority was commercial uses. We felt it was important because we're not looking at shrinking the number of commercial uses in the hamlet under the full buildout scenario. Quite differently, we're looking at a growth of 20,888 square feet. But we did not include that in our generalized tax estimate. Again, without understanding what those uses would be, it would be difficult to put an assessed value behind them. We also did not include 28,197 square feet of civic space. Okay, and as I mentioned earlier, we didn't adjust for 10% affordable units. It's important to note that, you know, the inclusion of the additional commercial area and the civic space would generate more tax dollars, in theory. The inclusion of an affordability requirement would reduce tax dollars. Is it an equal plus and minus between the two? No, it is not. But it's just a relative framework to try and put together a generalized number for comparative purposes. So using that methodology, we had a full buildout tax generation in, we did it in two years. We did a 2019 analysis, so it was consistent with the tax numbers generated in the DGIS. And we also looked at it from a 2021 budget year. In 2019, the total tax generation under the full buildout, and this is the full bout, buildout, the entire study area, the DGIS proposed action, we have a total of $6,665,224. And this is broken out between county, town, county, school, and the fire district. This is how the taxes are broken down. The same thing was done in 2021, $7,162,825. Now, we're in 2021 today. If we look at the 15-year buildout timeframe, it's 15 years. So from the get-go, this number of 2021, we can see it increasing over time throughout the 15 years. But again, we're taking a point in time and coming up with an analysis. So this is the spread. So in the information that you receive, the red line, you, everything I am speaking about tonight is redlined and explained in the information that you received in the red lines. To give you a summary of tax generation based on our estimated methodology, we see an increase in overall tax revenue in the study area in both 2019 and 2021. If we build this out 15 years, we can assume there will be an increase by 15 years out from now as well. The existing 2019 tax revenue was based on primarily commercial uses. It's important to remember that because in that number, it was a majority of commercial use and 107 residential units were accounted for. Under the maximum buildout, we would see an increase in those commercial uses of roughly 21,000 square feet. We didn't include the tax generation from the new commercial uses. So estimates are, but the, the estimates that we are providing are conservative. We also fixed them in time, 2019, 2021, very conservative numbers. Both of the estimates show an increase in the annual tax revenue for the Chapua Central School District. And the, the, the range, 2019 to 2021, is roughly $5,115,669 in 2019 as compared to $5,514,836 in 2021. So we're looking at the existing 2019 figure, whoops, sorry. The existing 2019 figure from the town was two, roughly $2 million. We are looking at it an increase of approximately $3 million. We also took some time to look at the student generation. In the DGIS, there was a calculation of a net increase of 96 new students. And this is under the maximum buildout over a 15-year period. We recognized that the Chapua Central School District's consultants produced a district-specific multiplier which calculated a range of 150 new students, an average of 10 students per year, to 256 new students, which was roughly an average of 17 students per year over the 15-year timeframe. So while the DGIS looked at one methodology, the Rutgers methodology, we also recognized the district-specific multiplier produced by the school district's consultant. The cost to educate, this was also discussed in the DGIS. And the per, per pupil expenditure in the Chapua Central School District was referenced, there, there were two numbers in the DGIS. There was $17,753 per pupil, as per the New York State Department of Education, which is based on New York State reporting requirements for school districts. The Chapua Central School District provided us with a number of $34,346 per student. This appeared to be a calculation produced by dividing the entire CCSD annual budget by the number of enrolled students. So in the DGIS, these are the two numbers that were provided when it came to cost to educate.
It was actually just slightly lower, about 32,000, it was slightly off, if I'm not mistaken.
Hmm, it could be. It could be. I'd have to double-check it. Bonnie, do you have that number handy?
No, I'm sorry.
When it came to a methodology for determining cost of educating the additional schoolchildren, it's important to note that there are, are several methodologies for determining the incremental costs of educating schoolchildren or additional schoolchildren. So the cost of educating additional schoolchildren generated through new development in community is not linear. You, you know, you can't assume that because a development costs something, that that's how much the kids are go, educating the kids is going to a cost. It's not a linear connection. There's, there is a correlation between enrollment and direct costs of student instruction and employee compensation and benefits. School districts with excess capacity typically are able to absorb some level of additional students within the existing cost structure, and that's important to note. This is, this is important and true, as it is in the Chapua Central School District, where there is excess physical capacity within a district to accommodate the additional students and the enrollment trends are declining. The use of the New York State Department of Education information provides a more accurate and objective predictor of incremental education costs. NICE had collects the information from each of the districts around the state and it's reflective of what CCSD would have reported directly to them. Okay, so that's important to know. So under the NICE said cost to educate, NICE had, looking at it today in 2021, on their, their information includes a figure of $29,069 per pupil. That is what they list as the cost per student for the Chapua Central School District in 2021 dollars. This figure includes expenses which professionally, we do not recommend to be considered in this analysis. They're not likely to be, to affect, to, to be, to, to impact the dollars when we're talking about modest enrollment increases. The elements that I'm speaking of relate to charter school tuition, debt service, and other building maintenance capital expenditures. If we look at only the instruction and the salary categories from NICE had, the total CCSD per pupil expenditure is $17,677. If we add in administrative salaries and benefits, it brings this total to $20,432 per student. We feel that this is the most reflective number of incremental costs of modest increases in enrollment. And I think that's important to know. When we lay this all out and we look at the, the cost to educate in the FGEIS, we, there's, this table is included. We look at what the DGIS analysis of 96 students equated to. We looked at the CCSD multipliers under the maximum buildout scenario. And then we looked at what the CCSD multipliers looked like when they reversed the bedroom, the one and two-bedroom scenario. So, and that's where we get the different number of new students, 96 in the DGIS, 150 students using the ratio of the number of bedrooms, the one and two bedrooms in the, under the full buildout. And then the 256 new sto, new students, as was presented if that bedroom count was changed. Using the New York State adjusted cost to educate of $20,432, the last column on this table looks at the annual cost over a 15-year buildout for the additional students. It ranges from $1,961,472, $72 up to $5,230,592. So that's the range we're talking about regarding the annual cost to educate additional students. Using, when we look at the actual school tax and cost to educate, if we use the generalized tax generation that we came up with for the maximum buildout scenario, which was approximately $5,115,669 in 2019 to approximately $5,514,836 in 2021, that's the dollar amount that would be allocated to the Chapua Central School District annually. Taking those numbers, comparing it to the annual cost to educate of each three category of new students, the 96, the 150, and the 256, we understand a, a resulting tax surplus or deficit. In almost every analysis, whether it's in, if it's 96 new kids, there is a surplus in both using 2019 numbers and 2021 numbers. With 150 new students, there is a surplus, both in 2019, $20,000, 2019 tax generation and 2021 tax generation. With 256 new students, in 2019, there was a deficit of $114,923, but a, a surplus in 2021 dollars. It's important to understand that the 2019 number no longer exists. We are talking about 2021 and tax generation increases related to every year hereafter for 15 years under the buildout scenario.
Sabrina, can I ask a quick question about that? So the two, the 256 value was a product of inverting the number of one and two-bedroom units. So is that essentially taking that number estimate, but actually not changing the tax income that might be generated if you had inverted the number of one and two-bedroom units?
Correct. It, it, it took the 256 units, but it really didn't change the tax generation in 2019.
Would it, would it change the tax generation if the number of two-bedroom units changed substantially?
Um, it, it would, yes.
So, right, so just saying this is.
Because again, taxes are assessed based on use.
Right.
And so if you have a one-bedroom unit, it, you know, you would, the tax generation, depending on the setup, could be more or less than the two-bedroom unit.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. So just to summarize.
Hang on, Sabrina, just one other quick question. Does, do these numbers change if um, we decide that we're not requiring commercial properties on the ground floor? So then there's no income generated by that, those first floor.
In our analysis, Lisa, we didn't include additional commercial use, right? So that, that first floor requirement, so rule of thumb, commercial use is probably, depending on its use, more, there's more, it's probably more valuable than residential use. However, without understanding the actual use, it's hard to confirm that. But if we were to allow residential on the first floor in our commercially restricted area, we're changing the nature of the taxes. But our, our analysis here did not include additional, it, it included 997 residential units and the, it did not account for the additional, almost 21,000 square feet of commercial area.
So the taxes would be more because you're not, you're leaving out 20 some odd thousand square feet of taxable space?
Correct. Correct.
But it also didn't count, right, for the 10% affordable units, which
Correct.
arguably may have children in those units as well. So the taxes are going to change. These numbers would go, would go down.
And the students were accounted for. It's just, and the taxes are really provided as an estimate to give a quarter of magnitude because there are so many, as Sabrina said, so many value variables. The, I think, the most important of which would be the value of the properties and the land, which is not something can be easily estimated.
So for the purpose of clarity, again, the students are there. It's not an issue of the students, whether it's affordable or not affordable. The issue is there will be more, whatever that more equals, because there'll be commercial 20 some odd thousand square feet that is not included, included, pardon me, in this assessment.
Well, the tax surplus and deficit would change too.
I, I think it's fair to say that not in, the, the 10% affordable tax right, associated with the, the tax associated with the 10% affordable does not, is, is most likely less than the tax associated with the commercial use. Okay, so you're not comparing apples to apples. We know that 10% affordable, whatever tax structure that is, whatever that is taxed at, can, is seen as taking away from total tax generation, but it will not be taking away as much as will be gained from the additional commercial area. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
So even, so even, even considering that this would still be a big underestimation of predicted tax generation.
Conservative estimate, yes.
And then does this take additional costs into account? Or this is just simply the gross amount and not a net? Not talking about the schools, but for the town portion.
This is focusing on the school portion only, this slide. So this.
But I think to Lisa's question, if I'm standing it right, Lisa's asking if, if this analysis changes because you are more infrastructure costs, whether it's police, firemen, things along those lines. And sanitation, but, but that's already built in because there's the assumption, I'm assuming, it's not the generation of taxes, whatever the dollars are going to be expense-wise, they're already there based on the prior analysis for the 997 units.
Right, and so if you look at this slide that I, that I just went to, we have the breakdown of town, county, school, and fire. So the total tax generation has been broken down in the, in the means in which it is distributed today. The percentage that the town gets, the percentage the county gets, the percentage the school gets, the percentage that the fire districts get. Okay, that, that, that is, that has already been proportioned when we start talking about the schools.
Right, okay, so there's been no real financial analysis then done for the town, just for the schools. I'm just, I'm trying to understand this because if we're.
The gross difference between existing and the proposed or the buildout in 2019, 2020 is in there because the existing condition is, was already in the DGIS. And then this, Sabrina, I don't know if those tables, but they're in the, they're in the written materials. I'm not sure if they ended up on a slide, but the.
Put them on a slide. They are in the, in the, in the submitted red lines. Alright, so I'm, I'm going to move forward and just kind of summarize the school taxes and cost to educate, just to kind of put everybody on the same page. Utilizing the 2021 NICE had adjusted cost per student of 20,000, under the DGIS estimate of 96 new students, it would cost between $1,961,472 to educate annually, which under the, under our analysis is a tax revenue surplus for the school district of between 3.1 million and 3.5 million, excuse me, at full buildout of 997 units over 15 years. Excuse me, at full build-out of nine hundred and ninety-seven units over fifteen years. Using the Chappaqua Central School District preferred multipliers. Their cut, their district-specific multipliers with an estimate of a hundred and fifty new students. We're looking at a cost of three million sixty-four, um, thousand eight hundred dollars. To educate annually each one of those children. Which results in a tax surplus for the Chappaqua Central School District between two million and two point four-five million. Under a full build-out of nine hundred and ninety-seven units over fifteen years. Using the two hundred and fifty-six students that were found within the Chappaqua Central School District's analysis. The cost to educate would be a modest deficit if we use the twenty nineteen tax generation numbers. Or a more modest benefit of two hundred and eighty-four thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars. Depending on the rental rates that actually were used. I also think it's important to note that the alternatives in the DGIS. As discussed in the FGIS. Also, you do, are also discussed in relation to the school taxes and the cost to educate. In the written material, the estimates were adjusted. To utilize the CCSD's consultant's district-specific multiplier. So the, the estimates are higher than those presented in the DGIS. So i- it is important to note that all, under all of the alternative scenarios. The present generation of students is the same or is less than the figures provided above. Okay, so it's still the, the mainly a surplus to the school district.
I mean, even if you add, even if you played with those numbers and added the cost, raise the cost per student. You're still well below what the tax generation is.
Most likely, yes. So I, I, you know, I, so I'm gonna just close this up and then I'll open it up for questions. So at your next meeting, ten, twelve, twenty-one. You're gonna be looking at consideration, you're gonna be asked to consider a resolution to accept the FGIS as complete. The, the picture to the right has been updated with the different benchmark meetings and the actions, the tasks that are before you. So you can see that. And then that's all that I had to share with you tonight. I don't know, Bonnie, if you wanna add any say, add, add anything? Um.
The only thing was I, I looked up the number while, um. To Lisa's question, then the DGIS, the town existing tax generated in the Hamlet, the whole study area. Was around two ninety, two hundred and ninety-six thousand. And the. Maximum build-out, the town tax with the twenty twenty-one that was recently in the materials you just received. Was seven hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four. So it's thirty, forty thousand, or thirty, forty percent more over the fifteen years. Again, order of magnitude, generalized assumptions and all of that, but, uh.
Yes, this is very generalized and very conservative. So happy to take any questions.
I wouldn't let everyone else go first. I have some question.
This is not actually a question, but I, I do wanna, um. Point out here, Sabrina, and just, um, this red line about. Working with the cent, the Chappaqua Central School District as it relates to. Any development that's happening in the Form-Based Code zoning district. And, you know, identifying, you know, working with them and letting them know like a projected number of schoolchildren. Associated with the development project. I give you a lot of credit. Um, just because I think that that's what's really important here. I know a lot of folks are, are worried about the pace at which, um, development happens. Um, and I think that having that coordination and communication line with the, the school district is super helpful. So thank you for adding that.
Sure. And, and for those of you who don't have the documents in front of you. It was added as a new threshold to make sure that there is coordination between the town. Um, and the central school district in relation to developments within the Form-Based, uh, zoning district.
Thank you.
Actually, I had a, I had a, uh, another question that was, that was from red line in response A one eleven. And it was about change in activating uses. Uh, page one twenty-four of the packet. So this was a use, you know, a consideration on a case-by-case basis for use, but use other than retail. Such as a gym or a lobby. And that the, um, review for an activating use would be subject to review and approval by the development department. And, you know, what I was wondering about here is if approval for a change in use. Should perhaps come back to the town board. Given that the town board is mapping the zoning change. You know, with delineating what would be a first-floor commercial. Area or an area that wouldn't require first-floor commercial. And it would be essentially changing that, um, uses defined by the town board.
I, I think, I think you can handle it many different ways. I, I think it's important to note that the. That the intention of the code is to create an activated use on the first floor. So, you know, I wouldn't go so far as to say it's a change of use. It's, if you're not going to have a separate commercial use, you need to have an activating use on your first floor. And if it's the activating use that is, that is giving you concern and you want it to go back to the town board. I think we could, we could definitely accommodate that.
I just wanted to kind of open that point for discussion, what others thought.
That's more of an issue for when we're actually discussing in terms of implementing the code and, and adding that provision into the code. But I, I, I think at least on its face, it seems reasonable, but that's something certainly we should discuss.
Laurie, I'm glad you brought that up because on my notes in A one eleven, on page one twenty-four, I just wrote, really? With a question mark, because it seems like there's no. First of all, I have an issue with that being an activating use, because I don't think a lobby to a building is really an activating use. But I agree that if, if it's not coming back to the town board, it should at least be going to the planning board. It should not be the development department that on its own has so much control over this town. And it should be coming back at least to the planning board.
Forty, there is a possibility. Uh, you may remember that when we worked shop the legislation. Uh, I guess it was back in July. We, uh, propose, the, the red line at that time proposed some changes with respective procedure. We actually removed some authority with respect to, um, changing or allowing, uh, uses that weren't contemplated. And this is certainly something that, an issue that we can revisit.
And I think I would just add that the, um, the secret documents are left with a response. And that's an example of something that the town board could discuss and modify in the. You know, come to a conclusion in the findings and then modify in the legislation after the secret process is complete.
Got it. Thank you, Bonnie. Does anyone else have anything? Okay, so, um. While you were talking, Sabrina, I took a couple notes, so. Okay, first, before I talk, I just want to acknowledge that I know that our town staff. Is working very, very hard on this document. And I don't want, I feel like you're seeing me as the bad guy in making comments on this document. And I want you to know that the work you've put into this is appreciated. I'm merely exercising my duty to the residents of this town by delving into this deeply and asking all these questions. So I just wanna make sure that you know that I think your work is, is appreciated.
Thank you, Lisa.
Okay, that, I think I told you that already, but I wanted to say-
You did. And, and, and listen, this is all part and parcel to the process, so there's no offense taken at all, so no worries.
So good. I'm glad you said that because-
Cause here it comes.
It's not you, it's me.
Okay, so I also, in, in listening and, and I, I didn't have a lot of time, as I'm sure most people here didn't. Since the, the pages on the school and everything came this afternoon. I really didn't have a lot of time to do a deep dive into them and to really look at the numbers carefully. But, you know, when you're talking, I, my, my thought is, I just wanna make sure that this. This shouldn't be confrontational with respect to the Chappaqua Central School District. Like, I think all of us want what's best for this town. So, you know, and we want the best result here. So my thought is if, if the CCSD numbers are higher and they have a legitimate rationale for having those numbers higher. I'm inclined to use their numbers because that would just mean that whatever we do is even better for the town. That if the numbers end up being lower, that we're in a better situation. I would hate to have underestimated numbers and then find off, find out we're in a worse situation. And, you know, the CCSD is the experts with regard to our schools, we are not. Um, and so I, I'm more inclined to really look at, at their numbers and what they're seeing and utilize those in our analysis. Than, than trying to argue why they're not good enough. Uh, because I think they, just like us, have fiduciary duties to this town and our taxpayers and want, wanna make sure that. Um, you know, they're doing the best by us. So I, I wanna just put that out there that I would like to use their numbers. And then also just in looking at it very briefly, it feels like. We did a more complete, or the consultants did a more complete analysis. To ensures that developers are reaping a tidy profit, rather than to understand the implications to our town. And I know you said things can't be done, but yet we were able to somehow do. I felt like the analysis is much more complete with making sure the developers have enough profit to make this something that. They would want to invest in as opposed to making sure that our property taxes. Our property values don't go down or our taxes go up because of, um. You know, increases and stresses put upon our school system. So that's just something, and again, I'm prefacing all this with the fact that. I need to delve deeper into these numbers because I just didn't have the time to do it, given the lateness of when we received everything. Um, and then I also wanna just understand a little more where the bedroom counts are coming from. Because in my completely non-scientific analysis. When I'm talking to people, everyone from young families to, you know, single retirees. Nobody wants to move into a one-bedroom apartment. Because certainly in light of a pandemic, if we are, end up being confined to end up, to, uh, you know, our homes again. I, every single person I talked to said they would never want to have a one-bedroom apartment. Including, you know, eighty and ninety-year-old seniors who are single. They would never wanna live like that because they don't wanna be confined to one room. So my concern is that utilizing a significant number of one-bedrooms. Even if the analysis is correct, in reality, when a, if a developer comes in. They're gonna say they can't sell one-bedroom units. And that, or rent one-bedroom units and that it, it's financially infeasible for them to do that and they need two bedrooms. So I just wanna understand where that, where those numbers came from. To determine what should be one and what should be two.
Maybe Ed, I think Ed could be able to potentially answer that because we're legislating. It might be a good place to start. Sorry to put you on the spot.
You, you're not. Uh, the actual allocation, I think, was a, something that Sabrina came up with, but-
The allocation was recommend, that Sabrina didn't come up with the allocation. The allocation was, um, was an allocation that the consultant team came up with. Based on what they had seen in other, in other developments similar to what we were looking at under the full build-out analysis. You know, when we're talking about apartments and creating that, what's termed the missing middle housing. What does it look like and how does it function? And that's where the number of one and two-bedroom units came from.
And the ratio. And the, the only thing I would add to that is that. It was directly an outcome of the, the working group that was put together and the market analysis. In addition to, um, the comprehensive plan goal of providing something other than three and four-bedroom, single-family homes. And the lack of one and two-bedroom apartments anywhere in Newcastle. That was another one of the strong considerations.
And that's something we could legislate that we discussed before.
Yes, I was gonna add, the team came up with that number. But what I can, what I can contribute is, um, the comment that Lori made earlier, which is if you flip. Um, as the school district assumed, if you flip the one and two-bedroom ratio. I came up, and my math could be wrong on this, so please check me, uh, Bonnie and Sabrina. But I came up with a ten percent, ten percent swing in, uh, tax generation by doing that.
Right.
Ten percent more.
More.
I, I would even argue that there are gonna be more two-bedrooms than, than what's in that, the analysis now. But I think that, yes, while it can be legislated, we still need to understand it from a, a, an environmental perspective. Before we can do that.
And the other point I might add to that is that the, that's a really good argument for having the threshold. Which was just mentioned about checking in with, um. The town development department and the school district coordinating. Because then as projects come along, if there are a different number of bedrooms. And was it, you know, estimated for the build-out, if it's coming along faster, coming along slower, whatever the case might be. That gets checked all along the way.
So I, I hear you. Um, I had a comment on that too. Um, which was, and a lot of this was based on my comments from, from last week that I sent that weren't actually answered. Um, I, I looked them all up, but, um. I wrote it down here somewhere, but if, um, I forget which comment it is, I have to look, but if, um. If there's development as of right, which is what this Form-Based Code does. It doesn't really matter just because the development department is going to decide to talk to CCSD and say, oops, these look like a lot more. Apartments and kids than we thought it was gonna be. We don't really at that point have the ability to stop development. Because it's development as of right under a Form-Based Code. So it's lovely that I feel like that the departments may talk to each other, not that they've spoken very much during this process. But even if that's true, I don't know what, what that's gonna do for anybody. Right?
Well, well, Lisa, and I think that's where we start talking about the thresholds, right? Um, the thresholds, i.e. limits that can't be exceeded. And, you know, for example, if, um, if a project comes in and doesn't have an analysis of the number of schoolchildren. It gets denied. You know, if they come in and they don't meet the setback requirements, it gets denied. Um, you know, the thresholds create the framework within which each project is examined. So if your board is talking about setting limits on the number of one-bedroom and two-bedroom. The thresholds, then if we exceed those numbers, then we can't approve projects. The intention is not to exceed a threshold that has been set by you. Mm-hmm. And so communication with the school district is to open up channels of communication, which will help. As, you know, and help the school district understand their budget impact, which is solely them. Um, and inform the town as to where they may need to do, where we may need additional analysis or additional input.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so. Alright, um. Okay, so let me get to some of these questions then. So I would like you to go, I can give you this to you again, but my comment, Sabrina, that I sent to you last week. Many, if not most of them, were not answered.
Um, Lisa, I assure you that those comments were fo- forwarded to the consultant team. I'm sure Bonnie can speak to, to anyone that you are questioning tonight. Bonnie, you want, do you wanna, um, talk to that?
Uh, sure, and we can talk to all the other ones too. So, um. And some of the change pages, like to these, weren't even here. So. Like in A, in A seventy-one, I, I don't have the page on this one because I was going back to my notes from last time. Oh, here it is, uh, page one oh-two. My comment last time was, you said parking lots won't fit behind buildings, so how will this be mitigated, the parking? And the answer was, um, that the intent is to have them behind the buildings, but most lots are too small and you can't put it behind a building. But if you can, then put it behind a building. That's not an answer. That's just acknowledging that there's not room behind a building to put the lot. It's not saying, it's not going to the core of the issue, which is, okay, there is no room behind the buildings, so where are we going to put it? Instead, the answer is, well, where you can fit it, we should screen the parking and put it behind the buildings, but then it says, many lots are small and do not have sufficient depth to provide parking behind the building. You just added that. So, you're not answering it, you're just acknowledging that there's no room, but you're not answering the question, well then, okay, there's no room, what are we doing with the parking? And then in another section, just to get on with that.
I can answer that if you'd like.
What?
I can answer that if you'd like, or if you want to go on to...
Sure.
It's basically describing the physical size and bulk of a particular lot. And the second part that was added on was a note to, to note that many, many of the lots in the study area are small and narrow, and if, unless they're combined with another site, they would not contain a parking garage. They would only be, you know, and every, every project is required to provide their own parking. So, therefore, if you do have the larger compiled lots, such as, are shown some of the build-out scenarios, if it's anything that is going to propose a garage or propose a parking lot, that has to be screened behind the building and to be the rear of the lot. So, perhaps it wasn't explained well in the, you know, narrative response, but it's, it's basically trying to describe the bulk. And the legislation itself shows diagrams of how a building can be wrapped around parking so that it's screened. And if it's not screened in that sense, it can be screened with fencing and landscaping and so forth. So, um, the intent of the legislation is to not have parking out in front, not have it as a, a parking garage. It can be seen by either off-site or on the streetscape, certainly. So, that was the intent.
Got it, yeah, no, I, I understood that. Um, but I, and I get that that's what the intent is, but then you're basically adding here, but that's not really possible because it doesn't, won't fit. So, then you go on to say, and I got to see where my notes are, you go on to say, basically, so they should use the parking toolbox to put, um, oh, this is, I think, on page three twelve, F eighty-three. So, they should use the parking toolbox to then find other parking that's allowed. But then it goes on, you added something, and I, I'm not looking exactly in front of me. You go on to basically say, but we're not going to allow parking in residential districts, which means this, this, you know, unicorn of a parking lot that's going to be within a mile that, that these developers can nicely bus people back and forth from can't actually exist anywhere because it doesn't exist. And now you're saying, we're not going to allow it in residential uni, uh, in residential zoning, which means there is nowhere for parking unless, as you say on page, uh, three twelve, I believe, that there will be structure parking, um, such as hydraulic garages, which are used in New York City and White Plains. So, I, basically, what the changes you've put in here are telling me, yeah, we're screwed with parking because there's nowhere to park because we intend to have it behind a building, but you can't really fit it there. And so, we intend to have the developers bus people up to a mile, but there's nowhere to put those lots, and now we're going to make sure they're not required, which means it's just going to lead to a developer either suing the town to say, I cannot possibly have parking here because it won't fit, there's nowhere for me to put it. Or they can't put up a building because they can't have sufficient parking, which sort of was the point of this whole exercise. Or they're gonna have to put up structured parking lots. So, I feel like it, this is trying to sort of, which, what annoys me, I'm sorry about this whole thing, is that I feel like you're trying to hide the answers. And we're not, I want, I want to hear, when I hire consultants, I want to hear the truth. I want to know what's good and what's bad, where is this going to be great? Where are we going to be screwed as a town so that we, sitting here as a town, can make an appropriate decision? Not, not, let me try to hide this to solve for letting this form-based code happen, and maybe they won't notice that what I'm actually saying with all these changes is there's nowhere to put parking unless we're going to put a parking garages. And I saw you added today, like New Rochelle and White Plains and Portchester have. That was also added in the red line. So, it, it, this whole document honestly concerns me because I feel like you're trying, like, things are trying to be hidden. And I don't know if that was the intent, but that's the way I'm reading it, where I shouldn't have to be answering these questions. That should be set out there right in black and white that says, you know what? This is going to be a problem, so we need to figure out how to solve for this. So, that, you know, that really...
One thing I will say about the parking is, it's going to be a challenge. You want to know the truth.
I do want the truth, exactly.
I'm not trying to hide anything.
But you are.
No, we're not. But anyway, the, the code provides, and this, and the SEACER review provides the toolbox because it's going to be a challenge. It's trying to come up with creative, flexible solutions for people that own land and want to provide, you know, the project that will be able to conform to the code. And every single project is going to be reviewed by the development department, and the parking is going to be a challenge for the developers and for the town to... But that's, that's how it is. If that's the way you want the hamlet to be developed, you don't want it to be all parking lots and parking garages, we're going to have to come up with creative solutions to get the character that's going to end up as well.
Thank you very much. That is the first time I've actually heard the truth in this document. So, I appreciate that, and that's what I would have liked to have seen in this whole document, saying this is, these are the pros, these are the cons, these are where we're going to have issues. And you know what? Maybe we can't put four stories everywhere because where the hell are these people parking?
Well, if I, if I may...
It's not, I don't think anyone's hiding it, I think it's been there from the beginning. But go ahead, Sabrina, what do you want to say?
What I was going to say, like, today, if you can't park it, you can't build it.
Yeah.
That's the way it is today. And what this, what this code does is that it provides a toolbox of options. Some of those options are not yet ready to be quote-unquote "activated" because the town hasn't made any decisions and we haven't undergone, you know, more parking discussions, analysis regarding parking on town property. But there are, there are options within that parking toolbox that are not available today. And today, a lot of the development, we haven't seen what can happen under our existing zoning because they can't park it. It's going to be the same situation as it is tomorrow, under a form-based code.
Maybe we should be finding a better way to do this than to just push it down the road and say, it sucks today, it's going to suck under the form-based code, but let's just adopt the form-based code anyway.
But not every property.
Makes no sense to me, and I have in giant capital letters, I wrote, parking toolbox useless because there's nowhere for anyone to park. You ju, because the changes that were actually just put in this document said, we're not going to allow, uh, parking in residential neighborhoods, which is probably in response to what I said last time, that your neighbor could, could sell their apartment and put up a parking, pave paradise and put up a parking lot, basically. And, um, now you're saying you can't do that, so I don't know where, within a mile, this magical lot that Pete, they can bus to is going to be. I've driven around, I don't know where it's going to be. The only thing I see that is possible is to actually put up a garage.
Right, but then Lisa, then the project becomes much smaller.
That's okay, maybe that's what's appropriate for the size of our town. Again, we're not Portchester.
SEACER required us to do a maximum build-out.
Yes.
And a maximum impact analysis. The truth of it is that we will never see the maximum build-out.
But I feel like, the, the, I feel like, oh, wait, document just went away. I feel like it's, it's being, no, no, it went away. See, this was my agenda right here, I don't know what just happened to it. Um, oh, no internet.
So, Sabrina, at, at current state, and it, I think, in the, once this is, is approved, the developer has to fit the parking on their property. If they cannot, then they need to have a conversation with the town.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct, and, and let me tell you, somebody says that they can put fifty units and they show me a plan, and I say, well, where's your parking? And they're like, oh.
And to be clear to that end, Sabrina, if, for example, someone said, hey, Walgreens parking lot, can you give me twenty spaces? Walgreens has to have, whether they're using it or not, that, that development has to have a minimum number of spaces, for example, whether it's used every day.
Correct.
And then to clarify, because maybe I'm misunderstanding Lisa's statement before about selling a residential, and maybe Ed, you may be better to answer this question, selling a residential home and building a, a, inferior, I mean, I don't see it ever happening, but building a parking lot in a residential neighborhood, I assume those are zoned differently.
It's not a permitted use in any residential district.
Because we don't want to create a, a false thing that just...
No, I know it's not, but my point was that then the parking toolbox, I know it's not, doesn't make sense.
Well, I think in part, a, and you look at the full, the full build-out, I think in part it, it presumes correctly or incorrectly that, that landowners, property owners are going to combine lots because it assumes that there's a few, uh, different developers, if you will, buying up all the lots. So, it makes big assumptions that may never come to fruition. You're a hundred percent correct. And I think this goes back to, unless the town down the road wants to rezone the, um, uh, our, our public land, none of this will ever come to anything like it. It just, it's just not feasible. So, it'll help develop certain properties, but other properties will, will be out of its grasp, for lack of a better term.
Okay, um, all right, so then goal, I'm sorry, I'm moving around and my, my document just got back, so now I don't know where I am. Goal twelve here, there was new language that put in that says, the draft FBC is going to promote development in the parking lot. Um, let me find that, I'm sorry, I don't know, I didn't write down what page it's on, and now I lost everything. Goal twelve, there was new language in here, um, which...
What letter is goal twelve?
It's just the goals.
What page?
I don't know, I didn't write it down. Um, all right, I'll find it, so, um...
The goals were listed in the comment A one, is that the...
I don't know, I wrote, it says, draft FBC promotes development in parking lot.
Did you say A one?
Well, A one is about the consistency with the comp plan goals. I don't know if that's what you were talking about.
I don't know, but, um, my concern here was that a lot of times, still in this document, it's saying that they, the FBC is going to be limited to North Greeley, but then this language was added in here, that the draft FBC promotes development in the parking lot, which means that it's not limited to North Greeley. If the FB, you can't say the FBC is going to be in the parking lot and the FBC is going to only be limited to North Greeley. So, I think those are some inconsistencies, I want to make sure we change.
Yeah, it's, it's really important.
Oh, here it is, goal twelve, it's not, it's page fifty-two. The draft code also promotes development in the parking lots surrounding the train station. So, I just...
Okay.
Want to make sure that we are clear because all people have been saying, no, no, it's just North Greeley, but now it's specifically saying that the code will promote development in the parking lot.
Right, but, but how this addresses, how the, how the form-based code is in response to the goals of the comprehensive plan applies to the whole seventy-two acres. We talked about this, I think, earlier in our discussions when we were talking about the goal to, uh, increase green and park space, right? And that, um, is respond, that, that goal to increase green and park space was in reaction to the, the, um, expansion of the park outside of the train station.
Well, yeah, but that was not the goal of the compri, of the comp, of the comprehensive plan was never to promote development in the parking lot. It, uh, we did talk about enhancing that small green area and making it slightly bigger, but that's not really...
Okay, so, got it, improve accessibility to the train station.
Um, then I have on, I started to write here, on page two thirty-seven, C forty-four, there was a deletion and addition that I thought should be deleted.
So, sorry, just back to your last point, Lisa, so I'm reading this, this goal twelve, and it's about a goal for improving accessibility to the train station. And then the, and then what we asked for, right, was some, uh, description for how the form-based code would meet that goal of the comprehensive plan. And essentially, what they're saying is that, um, if you live at the train station, it becomes more accessible to you. I mean, that's, that's essentially the rationale that is included with pairing that comprehensive plan goal to the DGIS.
Correct, that's, but that's making, well, it's making a large assumption that people want to use the train.
For sure, but, but I'm, I'm happy that they included that, those clarifying points because I think in the earlier draft of this, it was just listing the goals of the comprehensive plan. The form-based code is consistent with these goals of the comprehensive plan without a detail around the how, right? And this is giving the detail of how, you can accept it or not accept it. But that's what they're talking about.
But the, my point was that we can't, in the same document, say we're promoting development around the train station with the code and then have the code, and then have it say, but the code is going to be limited to North Greeley. That's all I'm saying, it can't be both.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think there are some, some just logistical challenges of answering specific comments from commenters.
Right, the document just...
That are, that are actually questions about the new direction, per se, without talking about the new direction.
Right.
So, it does, it does create, I think, I, I appreciate, like, within the complexity of the document, it can create confusion.
Yes, it can.
Um, but I think that you need to take these pieces of information in the context in which they're presented.
Right, I'm not confused. I'm saying, when you write a document like here, it's saying the town board's intention to limit the FBC district to the North Greeley area on page two thirty-seven, two forty-two here, actually, where I just saw that. Um, you can't say both. So, again, I wanted to take all of that out there. And then to say the maximum build-out is unlikely, the, you're supposed to be studying the whole build-out. So, I, I just, again, and Lori's made this point too, I don't like putting anything in here unless this FGIS, again, is confined to North Greeley, we should never be saying in here that it's confined to North Greeley in this study area, in this, in this document.
Right.
Because you don't know, and the form-based code, the way it works is if we're studying the seventy-two acres, it can be applied to the seventy-two acres. So, no analysis should ever talk about just North Greeley in this document.
So, then, I think, um, I think in many cases, uh, they're in response, again, to comments from residents about the pace and scale and timeframe for a full build-out.
But we don't know.
And the, part of the answer to that question is, here's a tool that the town has at its disposal to limit that or to have some control over that. And in this example, the intention to limit it to North Greeley is a tool that the town is using to help solve for full build-out over time.
It, it would need to say that the town, it, it can't say the intention of the town board because you don't know the intention, you don't fully know the intention of this board or any future board that will be in office in January. So, um, I think that you can't, it needs to say, the, the town needs to seriously limit this and it should not be approved in the whole area if this is what you're trying, if this is the goal you're trying to reach. Again, I feel, ooh, I just like there being, being transparency here.
Well, I, I think, I think to that point, you know, what in, I think we're perhaps partial alignment here in that I did ask that in, in settings where there's making a reference to the new direction, that we call it an example, or we call it a tool that the town can use to adjust the, the pace and scale of growth under the form-based code. I think we're agreeing on that.
We are. Okay, so then, response F twenty, which was on page two eighty-two, um... I didn't really think this made so much sense to add, conducting an additional traffic analysis reflective of a potential future redistricting of unknown scope or location is not considered to be a feasible or useful exercise as it would be based upon purely speculative assumptions. If you're supposed to be studying the whole build-out, to do a traffic analysis of the whole build-out, to me, is not... If you're supposed to be studying the whole build out, to do a traffic analysis of the whole build out, to me, is not based on purely speculative speculative assumptions, if that's sort of the point of this whole exercise. So again, it was, it was not done.
The traffic analysis, I'm sorry, Lisa, the traffic analysis was done on the entire build out. This specific question, I think, was saying a new traffic analysis should be done regarding a redistricting. And that was the part that I think the comment or the response were referring to saying is not considered to be feasible or useful. The redistricting traffic.
Oh, right. And what didn't make sense was in the case of Bell Middle School, which is located in a hamlet, an increase in trips could likely be pedestrian trips from new residents replacing auto trips from outside the. I don't know. This whole thing just didn't make sense to me. I think you should do a full, I didn't see a full traffic analysis, a full complete traffic analysis. Did anyone see that? Yeah, I didn't see that.
It's in the D G E I S. It's a very long appendix in the D G E I S.
Did I I I don't recall seeing that, and I don't recall it being updated, and I certainly don't recall it being updated after COVID. Um, which, again, is actually something that's flowing through here that I don't think a lot of this analysis has been updated to take into effect the implications of COVID and how people are traveling differently. Like, you go into the city now, everybody is driving. There are not that many people taking the train. There are many more people driving right now, which is will impact traffic more significantly.
If I remember correctly, in that enormous binder you gave us, the appendix included um the peak times of traffic. So.
But was it redone for COVID?
It was for the year of it was recently, it was, what it was the prior before COVID, but still the peak hour. So it wasn't necessarily like something that wouldn't be as comparable to what what is now, I would say, I would argue, but we can, you know, disagree on that.
Well, I don't think it's agreeing or disagreeing. It's saying I'd like to make sure that the, and I'd like to talk to the experts.
Yeah, you can certainly look at it in the binder.
I I don't think it was done appropriately, is what I'm saying. I don't think it was done.
So the traffic analysis was done according to the scope that was approved by the town board. Um, in in regards to an analysis post or, you know, due to COVID, it was determined that the traffic situation right now is less than what we saw pre-COVID. Um, and I think there were adjustments made or discussions in the F G E I S regarding that. I don't want to misquote it. But the, there was a complete traffic analysis done that was performed um as part of this process, and the the.
But that was like, if I recall, that was like, to Lauren's point, that was September twenty nineteen, I think.
Yep.
Right? So it hasn't been updated, and I think, wasn't it also based on evening traffic peak, not morning or anything?
It was, it was all, it was peak AM and peak PM.
Okay, I I I don't recall that, but I'll have to look at that again. Okay. What else do I have here? Page three twenty-five. Oh, and then. Hold on. I also wanted to go back of the proposed. Oh, so again, it's saying the proposed form-based code is focused on the center of town near the intersection of King Street and North Greeley. I don't think that that's true because, again, this is studying the entire seventy-two acre hamlet, which is not necessar- I don't see that as focused there. It's.
Provide a comment number, Lisa?
F one two five on page three twenty-five. And then um F one thirty-four, that's, this is the same thing that we're just punting, saying that the new direction is limiting the application of the form-based code to North Greeley. But in the future, if we want to develop the train station, we have to figure out parking. Again, I feel like this is supposed to be studying the whole area. To me, that's just punting it down the road and isn't fully studying that.
When I read that comment one twenty-five, it's about how we define the center of town. And the question is about how we define the center of town. And I think that response is disagreeing with the questioner that the center of town is being defined as the intersection of King Street and North Greeley.
This says the proposed form-based code is focused on the center of town, near the intersection of North Greeley. It's not focused on that. It's seventy-two acres.
That they're talking about, I believe, the question that this is in response to is about how you're defining the center of town.
Uh, no, it's not. I don't think so.
Parking needs to be adjacent to the buildings.
I mean, it's it's looking at where we're talking about parking, everything else.
Saying, and again, the center of town to me is really King and North Greeley.
My issue with this comment, and again, I'm giving this to the consultants, is that the the statement that the proposed form-based code is focused on the intersection of King Street and North Greeley is not necessarily true because the proposed form-based code can be anywhere in the seventy-two acres. My point is to the language. I don't like that because I put, I feel like it's putting language there that's actually not true. Okay, so moving on, on I two, which is for, I can't read my writing, four twenty-three or four twenty-seven, uh, four twenty-something, I two, four twenty-three. Okay, this whole comment, and I read the little memo, this whole analysis to me is suspect that Res Group will not give the names of developers that they spoke to who have a vested interest in making the most money possible in any development of downtown. I have a huge problem with that. And you adding, based on the interviews undertaken of people we don't know and you won't tell us, the information gathered for the market scan and the consultant's professional experience. It's unlikely investors would invest in Ta- Chapacqua due to the current zoning limitations. If you're talking about people who, I I need to understand who these developers are in order to give credence to this comment at all. Because frankly, if it's developers who stand to benefit financially from current buildings in town, of course, they're going to say that, and I will give little to zero um credence to these comments. If it's other people, then maybe that would weigh a little heavier on me. But without knowing that, I cannot make that determination. And I thought that the memo that said, well, they didn't want us to reveal their names, I don't care. We're paying you and Res Group, and we need that information in order to determine if if we can even remotely rely on this. And there is no way to know.
Bonnie, can we get that information to the town board via email?
He, I will ask again. Yes.
I mean, I don't know why they would say no in the first place, then, that they won't tell us. But to me, I cannot possibly evaluate this comment without knowing the motivation behind the people who are being interviewed.
But what I'm suggesting is that we get that information to the board via email, but that it not appear in the actual F G E I S. I'm not sure if that solves it, but that's my suggestion.
Yeah, I was actually going to suggest the same thing.
Okay, that would be much better because there's no way for anyone on the board to evaluate this otherwise. Um, okay, and the rest I will, I will send back to you and Sabrina.
Hey, Bonnie and Sabrina. Actually, I, when I took the time to to go through this today, um, I did notice a couple of errors. Um, I believe it's an error. Um, on page forty-one of the packet, it's the the grid of school year percentage increase without form-based code units, percentage increase with form-based code units, and the difference. When you go from twenty twenty-nine over to uh twenty thirty-four, those are decreases in percentages. Do you see what I'm saying?
In the cap, in the column.
I'm sorry?
So it should be indicated as minus, right?
Yeah, yeah, like, so five point five percent versus five point eight percent is negative point three percent.
I see what you're saying. Yep, we can adjust that.
And then the other thing I I just wanted to verify that I'm reading this, the U S Census data in two thousand nineteen, that forty-five point four percent of about fifty-four hundred households in C C S D had children under eighteen. Is that specifically saying? That doesn't clarify if it's children in the school district, correct? It's just overall under eighteen. So.
Yeah, that's correct because obviously um school age is kindergarten to twelve.
And ultimately, you can say, would it be fair to say that that percentage is actually less because, you know, we have families here who have nursery school children, babies, or kids in the private school district?
Correct.
That, okay, thanks.
I I actually want to, so let me share some of my thoughts. Um, starting on page um forty, the issue is raised, using the C C S D's projections for scenario three, the highest birth rate projection, so the worst-case scenario.
This is the new language that came in late this.
The projected C C D budget increase resulting from the maximum form-based code build out may be summarized below. And what I found interesting, and this this is what sort of uh Lauren was at least referencing in part, is if you look at the the increases without the form-based code units and increases with the form-based code units, you're seeing basically a difference year over year, at worst, um, in the beginning. So we're using in the beginning of two thousand twenty-four, point six difference between the increase in budget between without and with the form-based code, point seven the following year, point six, point six, point four, point three, point three. And then, starting in two thousand thirty, thirty-one, the difference is actually goes the other way, negative. There's a decrease uh in that uh that tax burden, point two, point one, point one, point one. And then when you look at uh the annual budget increases from two thousand and five to two thousand and twenty, as per the uh C C D website, you know, you're talking two thousand and five, eight point seven four, two thousand and six, eight point one three, two thousand, jumping ahead a little bit. Um, uh, two thousand and seventeen, one point one four, two thousand and eighteen, two point five, two thousand and nineteen, two point nine three. It looks like um I have a zero in two thousand and nine, point six eight in two thousand and twelve, uh, point three seven, two thousand and sixteen. But the bottom line is by far and away, the increases are significantly less with the form-based code than without the form-based code difference year over year. And these are, again, are based on C C S D's own numbers. So the fear that I think that all of a sudden, the community is going to uproot, uproot and leave because of this this huge tax burden, this tax increase, well, we've weathered it in two thousand and five, we've weathered it in two thousand and six, seven, eight. And in fact, we've weathered higher tax increases, assuming the worst-case scenario, um, with the maximum build out and the the maximum number of children added to the the district. And I think that's worthy to to see. Um.
I believe a ton of staff was fired in those years.
Even even if they were in some of those years, nonetheless, from two thousand and five to two thousand and uh twenty twenty, pardon me, uh, basically, they're all much larger increases than what we would see, uh, and no decreases what we would see with, based on their own numbers. Um, a couple of other points. Ed, Lisa mentioned about lawsuits, and to be clear, and I thought we had an F A Q, I went back and I looked uh about, I think you mentioned about subjecting lawsuits because people can't build and they're going to want to build, build out. If if a developer buys a property with a zoning in place, you're, the grounds to sue them, I think we discussed this in an F A Q, or you you have a legal opinion on that, did you not?
And there is an F A Q on that question.
Wait, and the so- the short answer is what, based on your research again?
The short answer is if, when you buy the property, you're necessarily aware of its zoning classification. So the ability of a property owner to obtain a variance or a zone change is extremely limited.
Well, I think we saw the opposite of that with Chapacqua Crossing, but when they sued us. But um as not my understanding, it is if there's zoning where it's impo- and we don't, and we make it so that it's impossible for somebody to build. And they don't, you know, we don't grant a variant, not saying zoning has to change, but if we don't grant a variance and it makes it impossible for someone to build, that they can sue us. And even if they wouldn't win, they can certainly have grounds to sue us.
That's true.
Yeah, and Chapacqua Crossing was a different situation.
Um, all right, so a couple of things I I wanted to note, and it's not clear to me. I mean, we we looked at the numbers from C C S D and divided it by the number of students. And, uh, you know, I don't know if if that is actually a fair way to do it in terms of their levy. Um, but roughly eight percent, seven, eight percent, um, which seems to be included in that number, comes from state aid when it was figuring out that thirty-four thousand dollar um, amount. And they're looking at, based on the Chason Report of two percent annually every year after. And it doesn't, it's, again, it's not linear, and it seems to include that ten thousand or nine thousand dollar, pardon me, ten million or nine million dollar number when they're coming up with the thirty-four thousand dollars. But again, it's not clear how they're how they're coming to that number. And pardon me, I'm just looking through this again. Bear with me for a second. I took some notes, I'm sorry.
If I could just jump in here a second, um, Jeremy, the um, the school district's number of thirty-four thousand, right?
Thirty-four thousand, pardon me.
The, right, what whatever portion, you know, the thirty-four thousand, you know, the consultant team was pretty adamant that typically, when we're looking at generation of schoolchildren and considering cost per child, that, you know, the whole discussion in the red line regarding the New York State Department of Education is a more reliable and industry standard use of determining the cost per child. And, you know, I I think that, you know, I walked everybody through the red line. There's definitely more detail in the actual document, and I would encourage you all to read through it, but we're using industry standard um in relation to figuring out cost per child. And, you know, we we had asked for more detail from the Chapacqua Central School District. Um, we're not, you know, saying that they're wrong. We're just looking for the best information possible so we could put together the best um assumptions possible to come up with numbers.
All right. And the other other thing I want to discuss is is Lisa brought up a good point about the district, the school district and the town, but I I think there's something is critically important because we've been be- being beaten up as as sort of not doing our due diligence. And I did ask for the numbers of students in this year who have enrolled. And last year was three thousand five hundred fifty-six. This year, it's three thousand five hundred fifty-seven, one, one student increase. I understand you have to look at kindergarten classes as well and graduating seniors. Um, I then asked for that breakout in terms of how many people are coming in for each class to see what it was. And and the town was told to foil, which really surprised me, that C C S D would tell the town to foil when, and speak to their council or whomever it may be, when they're asking us to spend more time to review. Well, then, why would you tell me to foil when we're working to the same goal? It 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 sort of lacks, it it, I don't, I just, it lacks uh sense to me that that would happen. And when I went back, so I went back and I looked at our conversation that we had, which you were present, neither of you were uh in terms of on the board, about when we changed over the ninety-nine, ninety-one units at Chapacqua Crossing to allow all of them to have finished basements. Uh, and then we converted nine from two bedrooms to three bedrooms. And during that conversation, I I requested, I actually requested because of my concern, I requested the number of students um that were in each, in each um grade, uh, and how much they predicted. And that was certainly given over. I didn't have to foil it then. And there were some statements made that that, this is not attacking, these are just simply facts. And and I think it's important to hear because it's changed now, the tenor has changed now, not because of what we have done. It's it's just changed from that particular development to the one that potentially could be downtown. Um, I actually brought up at one point, I said in substance, and I try to write the quote, but could you say, for example, if it's thirty thousand dollars per student, could you just multiply if seventy students came in times thirty to come up with that number? Is that what the cost is? And Christine Ackerman and Vicky Tip made it very clear that's not, that was not the case. Uh, sometimes a child could slip into a class, maybe you can't. Some child can be a lot more expensive, maybe he's a lot less expensive. Uh, and and in fact, it was said, you know, Ms. Tip said, the the idea of allocating money is equal to each child's is just a false paradigm. We can't possibly look at it that way. And that was in response directly to the seventy students times, times thirty thousand dollars a year, and you were present for that. So I don't know why now, all of a sudden, that's the gauge. So i- it concerns me that that the the sort of, the ball has moved. We discussed there. Um, and there was a statement made. And there was a statement made by Ms. Ackerman, and again, it's not an attack, it's just a statement. As long as feet, as long as a fee simple tax structure remains the same, in terms of enrollment, I, I really, I don't really believe that it should have any bearing on the decision that you make, meaning the town changing over the, the ninety-one units to allow for finished basement, finished basements. Whatever moves into this development, regardless of the number of children that are there, the district will support and make the adjustments as necessary to support the amount of children that live in that space. So it goes on to say, it is impossible to make a projection as you're asking, every student has different needs, can't really equate this number of students to this dollar amount. You know, what, what, it just, it would surprise me that whether someone pays fee simple or not, if you're, you're creating a finished basement, you're creating, for lack of a better term, another bedroom, and as some people have voiced, proposal form-based code, for example, that if you have a den, that's just a code word for another bedroom. If it's good for the goose, it's good for the gander, because putting a fourth kid or a third kid, whether it's fee simple or not, you're taking away, or you're adding another student to the system, arguably that thirty-something thousand dollars, if you're using today's numbers. So it, it just confuses me as to why it's okay, if it's fee simple, you can bring in more children. Why it's okay if it's fee simple, you don't have to count it thirty thousand dollars per student. But when it comes to non-fee simple, it's a totally different analysis. So, you know, I don't have the answer to that, but I'd certainly like to know. But this, we're going to keep this open for another week, because next week, we're going to consider acceptance as, as complete. So certainly, residents have another opportunity and share their thoughts with us as far as the new material goes. But I, I'd certainly would like to know that answer, because it's an important one. How, how the dynamic and the, the structure and the analysis changed drastically? In fact, it was said that we could, and I think it was Ms. Tipp said that we could redistrict, we've done that before. But I think here, we heard that we could not at a prior meeting. So I, I'm just really confused as to how we ended up here. So I'm happy to work with the school district. But I shouldn't be, we shouldn't be told to foil when we're trying, and I'm looking at you, it's not you. You know, when, what, we shouldn't be told to foil when we're trying to work to the same end. So, you know, I, I have more comments, but I think that's all I need for now. I'm grateful that you showed, whether that's fully accurate or not, conservatively, that the monies that are generated are significant, that you could probably deduct some of those dollars and still be well ahead of the game, even if I think based on our conversations, that full maximum buildout is not likely a real scenario, unless there's, you know, movement in the future to, to take wholesale changes to the zoning. So, thank you, Bonnie, and thank you, Sabrina.
Bonnie, are you going to be able to update it all, any traffic analysis for actual, like, real current day situation before next week? Because my concern is, and I know the last one, you know, that we saw was done in twenty nineteen, and my concern with not seeing an updated one is that the world has totally changed. People are driving more, people are working from home more, so they're then going out in the middle of the day, and at times that maybe weren't studied. I know if you, ooh, in downtown, if you go to Bobo's at any random day, there's a million people there. People are going out for lunch more, people are doing things that they may not have done when they were commuting or sitting in an office all day, as well as driving more than taking public transportation. So will you have an opportunity to update that at all by next week?
I believe that all of those comments were made and well documented in the FEIS and the board is, we've responded to them and with the supplemental appendices that are in the FEIS.
Would you mind pointing them, me to those, I, I must have missed them.
Well, you know that the traffic section is in section F, and the appendix, I believe, is also appendix F or G, I have to look it up.
So that was updated since twenty nineteen?
It responds to the comments.
So.
Okay, so, because I know I made a comment that it should be updated, and I didn't see an answer to that, so I'm not sure. Yeah, I mean, maybe I missed it, if you can point me to it, I will stand corrected.
So my, my suggestion is, is whatever you've, leave you've answered, or in fact answered, or if you could just share that in an email so that we can go over line by line, in terms of what you asked for, send, send it to us. What you've done, the red lines, and you've produced it, you can even just point directly to it.
That would be super helpful, thank you.
But, but to be clear, I understand Bonnie to be saying that through the FGES, comments were answered with the latest information, but there is no intention to go back and redo the traffic study or update the traffic study itself.
But I asked that question, so then it wasn't answered.
My.
I, I, I think the answer is that it's not going to be updated now.
That a second traffic analysis would be outside the scope of what was contracted.
Well, I don't think it's not, it's not something that's being recommended by the consultants, as I understand it. And within this timeframe, it's not something that I think ordinarily would be done.
So.
You, I'm sorry, Ed, you wouldn't ordinarily study traffic as an.
Not, not after, not after less than two years, it's not.
But the world has changed, like, normally, I would agree with you, but the world has completely changed in two years. This is not a normal, you know, situation. We have not had a global pandemic since the Black Plague, or whatever that was, a long time ago. So, and they didn't really have too many cars back then. So, I mean, the world has changed. I would agree with you in a normal situation that, yeah, one to two years, maybe there's not a significant change. But there is a significant change with how people live, work, commute in the last couple of years. But to not study that, I feel like is, is, is a huge hole. Because there's no indication it's going back. Like, I know plenty of people who are not going back to the city to commute at all. And they will be here driving around, and they, or they are going in once or twice a week. So it's significantly changed. So I feel like that's a huge hole, but I would agree with you, in a normal world, you maybe wouldn't update it, but this is not a normal world, we're standing here with masks and, you know, six feet apart.
I, I, I hear you. Bonnie, can you address that?
I was just reading to try to find the first response in section F that would.
Well, Bonnie, well, Bonnie's looking at that, I would, I would just comment, yes, the world has changed. I mean, you don't, you surely don't plan for a pandemic, you plan for a post-pandemic, you don't plan for a pandemic period beyond, because you don't expect a pandemic. So I, I get that, but you don't plan for disaster, you plan for after. And yeah, things have slowly trickled back, and, and you can't, I thought I had read, and I certainly could be wrong, that, you know, New York City was seeing a lot more people coming in, you know, I'm certainly going in more, but yes, you're.
They are, but they're driving.
You, you're correct that there's a lot, there's a lot less right now. I don't know, quickly look at the parking lot, a hundred percent. But I mean, there was even a, a baby boom that was expected because of COVID. And our birth rates are down, I was, and I'm pulling from an AP article that I went to a government site. US, US birth rates fell four percent last year. And again, this is assuming.
Because people were getting way too much.
But when even our numbers are assuming birth increases, and that was one of the controlling drivers in the analysis for the CCSD consultants. But birth rates fell four percent last year, the largest single year decrease in nearly fifty years. And that was across all ethnicities, women, different age groups, thirties and forties. So, but anyway, that being said, there's a lot of things that are changing. But you're not, you're, you're, you're planning that, that at some point, the world, for lack of a better term, rebounds.
The world may have changed for good.
Oh, so if, if I may, just to add some framework around this, the, you know, the proposed action, which is the full buildout, which has a component of walkability, right? You know, yes, traffic patterns may have changed. Are, I believe, and, you know, unfortunately, the traffic engineer is not present tonight, but I believe in conversations, it was, it was talked about that the changes that, that our parking lot will fill again in town hall with cars. And if it doesn't, it would be less of an impact, or seen as less of an impact, than what was initially studied in twenty nineteen, because we did study pre-pandemic, when the parking lot was more than full. And so, you know, the intention under SECR is to look at the maximum impact. It is, you know, the, the discussion, if my memory serves me correctly, when we asked this, when we were talking about factoring in pandemic traffic patterns, it was determined that there wasn't enough information on pandemic traffic patterns to incorporate into the analysis at this time. You know, we know that our roadways, the level of service will change over time. We know that a ten per, you know, the over, you know, an increase in traffic without any additional building will cause the need to look at reconfiguring traffic patterns and doing improvements on intersections. So when it comes to traffic, we pretty much know that we need to make improvements. You know, the, the consultant team has put together a timeframe in regards to certain improvements at certain intersections that is contained in the FGES, so that, and, and contained in the thresholds, so that we are better prepared to look at that. We know we need to do more work when it comes to traffic, because the traffic problems will exist whether or not you change the code. So that, you know, that's kind of where we sit, the comments and responses. I know Bonnie is feverishly looking, looking through for that comment where it's first talked about, but they were adequately responded to based on the information that we had. But to suggest that we didn't do our due diligence when it came to traffic in relation to the full buildout is just not true.
Right, and I'm going to say that I'm looking at an older version here. I mean, and the first few comments, the first half of section F were on traffic, the second half were on parking. And I can talk to our traffic consultant to get the exact number where he answered that question. But, you know, the comments are throughout here, and it discusses both the school peaks, it discusses what was just, you know, analyzed in the DGES and how it relates to the current comments. So I'll have to get back to you, though, with the specifics, I'm just not, it's too long, I need to just pick it out right here.
My, my suggestion is, I'm sure there's people in the audience who want to share their thoughts, and maybe people online. So why don't we do the audience first?
Warren Gottlieb, eight, Plinth Road in Chapakua. At the past several sessions, as you know, I've tried very hard, and in earnest, to really focus on good process, meaningful engagement, and of course, the substance surrounding the draft FGES. Regrettably, it has become clear that the three people in the town board who are pushing this forward are not interested in these concepts, and appear, in my opinion, to have contempt for their own constituents. And it pains me to say this, because I care about our community and the outcome here. Got a lot of other places that I could be tonight. And I'm here for the young families who just moved here, for the families and residents who have been here, you know, a number of years, like my family, and for those seniors who love our community, who are trying to stay put, trying to figure out how they're going to be able to do so. And for those of our valued Hamlet merchants who rent, who have faced obstacle after obstacle after obstacle, year after year, could continue to hang in there. To all of those constituents in our town, from the, my friends and neighbors, from the bottom of my heart, I say to you, you deserve better than this. You have been failed, and you have been betrayed by this town board majority. All while you and yours were dealing with the effects of a worldwide public health crisis, and trying to focus on the day-to-day, while dealing with an unimaginable set of circumstances. Circumstances we are not done recovering from yet. To those on the town board majority who disagree with me, you need not waste your words disagreeing with me and/or, you know, trashing me, because, you know, it's just, it's just par for the course at this point. You've spent enough taxpayer time and resources on your viewpoints, and frankly, suppressing the viewpoints of your constituents. In short, I and others have seen your deeds again and again and again. And those deeds cement my opinion that this entire process is a farce, and that you have no genuine interest in doing the hard work that representative, representative government requires. The hard work that produces consensus and compromise. The hard work that preserves the basic sense of community to which every Newcastle resident is entitled. Instead, you have chosen to mislead and steamroll residents and take advantage of their trust. I was not even going to come tonight, because at the last session, I was informed by the town board majority, essentially, that before even hearing all the public comments for the engagement session they were at, or the CCSD's comments, they were going to deem the FGES complete. Those aren't real engagement sessions. This isn't a real engagement session. This is a performative stunt to fool residents who are busy with a million other important things right now, into thinking that somehow you are looking after them, and that their fellow residents, and their, and that their fellow residents were being meaningfully engaged with at this event. I know you will not agree with me, you will tell me otherwise. And as much as I really would like to believe your words, I've seen your actions. So what am I talking about? Illustratively, here's what I'm talking about. I have repeatedly asked at every one of these sessions, I made a very reasonable request. I asked that you provide residents, certainly yourselves, at least a week from publication, before having an engagement session on the associated draft FGES, IS section document. These documents require significant time commitment to digest, even when they are redline pages. Once again, as you have done repeatedly, you just started to dump it on Friday afternoon, right before today's session. I've talked repeatedly about respect being a two-way street for each other. The process, the significance of the materials and the decision in front of you. Your deeds, not your words, have time and again told me, you just don't care. But what you did this week got me out of my living room tonight, which I look forward to spending and watching a Yankee game with my son. You may not think that's a big thing or not, but, you know, those dads, those things matter. What you did today was a new low, and I'm here to tell you, straight from the, straight from the source. This afternoon, somewhere, I would estimate in the two PM hour, but certainly this afternoon, you dumped heavily redlined pages that you knew darn well no one would have the time to adequately review for tonight. And what were those pages about? Taxes, the Chapakua Central School District budget, and school enrollment. Those were the big things, among a few others. And oh, you attached a memo at the end that you've been sitting on since September twenty-eighth. And the best part, you tried to fool the reader into thinking that the document in the packet was last revised on October first, twenty twenty-one. Today's afternoon dump has a cover page saying that that's the last revision, October first, twenty twenty-one. Yet stunningly, the heavily redlined pages that you added, essentially the meat of what you were discussing tonight, were buried at the end of the document and show a revised date on the top right-hand corner. If every one of those pages you slapped on the back is October fifth, twenty twenty-one. In short, not only are you giving residents and interested agencies, not only are you not giving them fair notice, you are playing games with the integrity of redlines. That is just astonishing. On this count, I certainly demand that every interested agency and every resident be given public access to a PDF containing a full cumulative redline of all document changes from the July eighth, twenty twenty-one submission date on the cover through October fifth, twenty twenty-one, with all pages in the FGES, with at least two weeks' notice to review. It is clear you are playing games, enough. And for those of you who are going to tell me that you get the documents the same time residents do, and have never had an issue reviewing them, there is no way, no way. You could have done your diligence on those heavily redlined substantive pages since this afternoon. And if you think you can, respectfully, you either don't know the task in front of you, or you're not capable of completing it. or you're not capable of completing it. Your deeds indicate you are not interested in giving residents and interested agencies bare minimum timeframes to conduct the meaningful review necessary to have anything resembling community engagement. Not the Chappaqua Central School District, not the rank-and-file resident like me. What you did today was proof positive that those of us that have been watching this unfold in horror are fully justified with being upset. It goes without saying that I'll stop asking for you to do a better job alerting residents to the release of these documents. Not only are you not interested in helping them find them, you're actively trying to sabotage their review. Now, regardless of whether residents can actually find these materials on Ecode 360 on our town website, they now need to sit there essentially on the night watch to see when they're elected or going to essentially play games with red lines and deny them full and fair disclosure. How dare you do this? Do we need to now all check to see if you were dumping pages during the meeting? At this point, I think it's, I, I think it's a possibility that should be considered. You were essentially playing bad faith litigation games against residents and interested agencies. And don't worry, I'm almost done. You'll be happy to know that I'm not even able to deliver substantive input tonight because you made it, that I couldn't do so. This is a disgrace and an embarrassment to this community. You have finally outdone yourselves. Last week, it was an engagement session where you told the community before they had their say that you had already made up your mind, and this week, you've done the same thing but decided to not even give people the ability to do a fair read of the document in advance. This is a farce. The process is contaminated, in my opinion. If you have this much contempt for those you represent, perhaps you might consider doing something else. The draft FGIS that the town board has been releasing remains incomplete, inaccurate, misleading, intellectually dishonest, and clearly meant to reach a predetermined outcome regardless of the hard look that SECA requires, all against the backdrop of a bad faith process. I cannot, simply cannot believe what you have allowed to occur. The residents of Newcastle deserve better. And PS, stop sending us propaganda emails on Friday afternoon on our dime. It's an insult to the office that you hold.
Thank you, Mr. Gottlieb. I would just note that what we do now, and thank you for pointing that out. Jill, we've actually now linked to the work session and the agenda. So I just looked at our, our past newsletter, and I believe now it changed, and I, and I could be wrong, but I believe it changed. So for example, it says town board work session agendas, you click on it, it goes right there as opposed to having to surf through it, and it starts off, you see the first 10, 5, 2021 town board agenda, for example.
And did you tell them to look this afternoon, Jeremy, after you sent it around?
So let me, let me, let me finish. So anyway, Ed, we have another week, and this is something that we can consider to continue to discuss, whether or not we put this on for, to accept this final, the FG EIS as complete, pardon me. There's nothing preventing this from continued conversation. People can submit their comments and we can certainly discuss among ourselves as well. That being said too, this process started August 10th, setting aside the fact that the, the DG EIS has been out for a good year. So it's not as if on an island, you look at this particular document and say, well, I've only had X amount of time, because we've had opportunity review and review and review should someone need to or want to. All these sections, and what we have today, yes, is an important section, make no mistake, and they're all important, but you know, I, I get that. But we still have a week to review it. So you know, I, I'm comfortable with it, you know, certainly I'd rather not be releasing it when we do release it, I get that.
How about the residents?
Hold on, as I just said, so we're not voting on it tonight, and there's, there's an opportunity to review. So it just has been an opportunity to review all the other material. So I do appreciate your comments, we're, I know we're going to disagree, I appreciate your comments, so thank you.
Hello, Marianne O'Connor, 1070 Hardscrabble Road. I have a question and, and a couple of comments. The first question is regarding the third redraft to response A111 that you spoke to briefly earlier before. This goes to the requirement, whether there is one, to have retail on the ground floor. The redraft says that activating uses are a means to allow the consideration on a case-by-case basis for a better, or for a use other than retail, and that a town, basically a town employee will review and approve. So I know there's discussion of whether it would be the town employee or the town board, or possibly the planning board, but is there an idea of what the standard would be for approving or denying the request to have an activating use instead of retail?
Is there a legal standard, or how is that standard crafted?
I think it's a question for Sabrina. How, how would she evaluate a proposed activating use if she, if the planning department or its planning director were tasked with that?
Sorry, the, the activating use would, it really has to be something where the applicant would have the same type of windows and the same facade as a commercial use, and there would have to be people coming in and out during business hours. That is the activating use.
That's not the question. The question is, a developer comes in and says that they want to not have retail in an area where the, the property is designated as, you know, having a retail requirement. And they come in and they say, we want to have an activating use instead of retail. I want to put a lobby and a gym for my, my new residents. What is the standard? If you're the, if you're charged, that's what, that's what response A11 puts you in charge, Sabrina. What is the standard for saying, no, you have to have retail, or yes, you can have an activating use?
There has to be people walking in and out during the business hours like every other commercial use. The building itself has to look like a commercial use from the street.
Okay, so you're basically saying you would, you would permit every developer as long as people walk in and out?
I, you know, I don't.
Is that, I mean, that's what I'm hearing.
You know, I get accused of cross-examination, but I.
Well, she's not answering the question.
Sabrina, I would assume in part there's also a case-by-case analysis for each, each person.
Sure, they have to provide hours of operation of their activating use, what it is composed of, whether or not the front of the building is, you know, there's people in it. There, there has to be more, more detail in the description.
Okay, so then essentially you're saying.
Can I interrupt you for one second?
Yep.
Sabrina, I would consider if, if that's going to be the standard that we, you know, they also would need to prove that they cannot rent it for a retail purpose. Because otherwise, everyone's going to come in and not even bother and just say, yeah, I can put in a gym and a lobby and I'm good.
I, I will tell you, my preference is to have commercial uses on the first floor where it's a required retail area.
Well, that's, that's my preference too. I'm sure it's the community's preference, right? But, but you have a code that permits them to not have retail. You're, the response.
We've had discussions tonight and previously about removing the activating use language where they want required retail.
I, I would suggest that, that's a code issue itself.
Well, I go, I go back to the, the DG EIS, which is what you're studying now, right? And so you've, you've taken the time to respond three times to my question. This is the third redraft, right? And now you're actually changing what you're, you're purporting the code to say. Currently, in the DG EIS and the code that's attached, it does not even say that a, that a town employee is going to look at it on a case-by-case basis. It just permits the developer to do it, right?
I think that's a, that's a big leap, just permit, there's, obviously, there has to be a process, as she's explaining, it's just that you can just.
It's not in, it's not in your draft code, which is attached to the DG EIS. There's no standard, right?
But that's not something we would need for the environmental impact. And Ed, tell me if I'm wrong, how that is crafted and how that's done, that's a form, a code question. And I would also just add that to assume that, as I say, a three-story building, which some folks are saying is, is something that can earn enough dollars, that the, the bottom floor would just become an open space for a gym that wouldn't be generating dollars as much for, for, for current tenants, there's also the, the, the practical side of it. But more importantly, Ed, this is a, a code issue, not an FGIS issue.
We've gotten way, way off. Okay. Adverse environmental impacts.
All right, so that's fine, that's fine. Then, you know, the fact that you've gone through three redrafts and each time changing it, made me go back and read the DG EIS. And the DG EIS mentions retail 92 times. There's a discussion on pages 1-13, 1-14, and 2-24 regarding and stating that there will be an increase to commercial and retail square footage. Page 3-28 talks about the regulating plan and states definitively that it designates areas where retail is required on the ground floor, no exception. Pages, page 3-51 says, I'm not going to go through everyone. Page 3-51 says with, talks about retail commercial required on the first floor of all corners of this intersection due to its central location. There's another one on page 3-53. New structures in this view will range from two to four stories with retail commercial required on the first floor. So there are other references to that as well. In the professionally produced videos promoting the form-based code on the Chappaqua Forward website, you have people saying things like, quote, "Having a form-based code will add more commercial space," end quote. Quote, "It will add storefronts," end quote. End quote, "The form-based code will give us more restaurants and will give us greater nightlife," end quote. So noting all of that, you have a material deficiency in the DG EIS that triggers a requirement for a supplemental EIS. Under SECA, a supplemental EIS is required if there are changes proposed for the project, newly discovered information, or a change in circumstances related to the project. The regulations provide that in the case of newly discovered information, the criteria to examine include the importance and relevance of the information and the present state of the information in the EIS. Based on the importance of retail highlighted in the town's professional videos and throughout the DG EIS, I would say that a retail component is a critical component of this plan. The present state of information in the EIS clearly describes absolute retail requirements with no mention of a carve-out that is included in the draft code and makes no mention of the provision you are describing in response A111 that will enable a town employee to have discretion over whether we have retail in the required locations. In Shapiro versus Planning Board of Town of Ramapo, the court ruled that once a deficiency in the EIS is brought to the attention of the lead agency, the failure to require the preparation of a supplemental EIS violated SECA. In Green Earth Farms Rockland versus Town of Haverstraw Planning Board, the court said that the lead agency failed to make a reasoned elaboration of its basis for determining that a supplemental EIS was not necessary. And Keenan Bean has actually a nice article on, on this process.
Thank you.
In the, in that decision, the court explained that this, that SECA provides the filing of a supplemental EIS to address specific adverse environmental impacts not addressed or inadequately addressed in the EIS due to changes in the project, newly discovered information, or a change in circumstances. With respect to Newcastle's DG EIS, it is filled with unconditional language around the retail requirement. Your first two drafts of the response to question A111 indicate an absolute retail requirement. The community is unaware of any exceptions to the stated retail requirement on the regulating plan, and it seems that the board itself and the planner were also unaware of any exceptions. In fact, when asked if there were any exceptions to the retail requirement on the regulating plan, board member Lori Morton answered in the negative and stated during work session in August, quote, "The orange was denoting where the current draft code would require retail on the ground floor." When I press further on this point and ask whether it absolutely requires retail or whether there are any exceptions, Mr. Salon punted the question to Sabrina, who stated, quote, "For clarity speaking, the draft code that exists today that is contained within the environmental review, DG EIS, has a required retail area identified on the map in orange that is not negotiable." While from response A111, it appears that it will be negotiable, and that is a change in the plan. The latest redline of response A111 provides for a change in the project as it now contemplates that a town employee will get to decide whether to require retail or not if a developer makes a request to, for example, have a gym, a storage room, a lobby, et cetera. And courts in New York have shown a willingness to demand a supplemental EIS in a wide, wide range of instances. And my last point, since the community deserves to know this, I respectfully request Mr. Salon that in one of the two town e-newsletters this week, that you adequately disclose to residents that your proposed form-based code will not guarantee retail or dining anywhere in the hamlet and that you are leaving it up to a town employee to decide whether there is retail or dining, including in buildings such as where Susan Lawrence now sits, where Ibiza is located, et cetera. And that we may wind up losing restaurants and businesses that we love, and that a town employee will decide whether retail or dining will be required in those locations. The community does not understand this because your DG EIS states the opposite, and it is not clear, which is why even Ms. Morton and Sabrina are confused. The community deserves to know how this will work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor. And fortunately, as you noted, we have Keenan Bean to help guide us on.
I can't hear you.
I said, thank you, Ms. Connor, O'Connor. Unfortunately, we have Keenan Bean to guide us on this issue, so I, I do appreciate your comments and we'll certainly take a look.
So will you consider a supplemental EIS?
I'll rely on counsel, but I'll, I'll certainly take a look, but I'll rely on counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First time call, long time listener. Is it possible to bring back the slide?
Just identify.
Rob Fleischer, Oak Hill Road. Is it possible to bring back some of the slides that we had from the earlier presentation about costs and? I'm going to ask a couple of questions that relate to those. You can bring them back as appropriate, but I just wanted to make sure that you had them ready, if that was something you could do. When you did those analysis, and you, and I had a little trouble following it because first I was seeing it was today and I was sitting 10 notes back, my glasses don't work as well as they used to, a little fogged up as well. When you looked at the comparison, it seemed like there were two things that were missing that if I were doing the analysis, I would think were really important to have. One was kind of a break-even analysis on what the cost per student is that kind of flips the outcome. So could you bring up that page again, is that possible? They had the summaries of like the, I think it was the different.
Can you be, can you be more specific which page I'm reading of the presentation?
That compared the number of students and the, the amount of money that came under one scenario, the amounts of money that came under another?
It was like 2019, 2021, I think, that's what it was.
You keep going down, keep going down, keep going down, 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 down. About that one, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. And about the, the one right above it?
That one?
The, the, the next one would be, would be fine. Okay. So when I was doing this and, and I was trying to follow it, maybe I'm completely off, but if I have and you're using, you ended up using the NICE Ed numbers, which I think were about $20,000 a year? Is that, is that the right number?
The NICE Ed number is $20,132 per year.
So if you.
It's an adjusted NICE Ed number.
Wasn't the NICE Ed number, was it originally 17 something? Yeah.
Well, the, the NICE Ed number, in 2019, it was 17. Right here, they're using instruction in salaries, it was 17, 6, 7, 7. The total number on NICE Ed reported by CCD is $29,069.
So if you go back to the other page, if you use the CCSD number, what would those numbers in the, in the, in the, in the far right column be?
What do you mean by, what do you mean by CCSD number?
Well, if you use the number CCSD, I asked, what was it, 34,000, 33,000?
That's not, the, the, the number, 34, 34, 6.
Right. So I'll ask it a different way. So I'll ask it a different way, okay? What is the break-even cost per student in, under each of those scenarios where it flips?
We need to do the break-even.
Well, my guess is, can, does somebody else, I don't, can't do it right. Can somebody else do it right now?
I have it. It's a hundred and ninety.
Hundred and ninety, that's for students or thousands?
Hundred, hundred and ninety new students. Is what? Is the break-even based on what per student?
No, they, you're going to-
I think he's asking the dollar amount per student.
But that isn't exactly, what I'm asking is, at ninety-six students, if we use that number, there's a cost per student that will take that three-one-five-four-one-nine-seven number and make it zero. I don't know what it is, but it, there's a number that does that.
I'm not sure why, why do you need to go through that?
Because I'm trying to put the, the numbers in context to know how important it is to understand what the cost per student accuracy is, right? And then also doing that down, this, what this basically says with about a thousand new units, if the multiplier for each unit is point two five, you're kind of at the bottom level. If it's point one, you're at the top level. If it's point three-three, you're even farther. I'm trying to understand where, where things go, get problematic, and I don't think it's an unrea-, if I was the credit guy doing this, I'd ask that question. It's just, you know, I want to know how far off I can be-
Okay.
-how important these things are, and so, I don't know if that's a number that, that you looked at, Sabrina, or whether the consultant did, but I think it's important to know those numbers. Because if somebody's-
It's a consultant team, and I, I need to put it in context for you, Rob. It was in response to comments.
Okay.
The comments were, what is the break-even point?
I understand that, that we didn't, I didn't submit the comments. I've submitted a lot of comments. I tried to watch, I tried not to add to the burden here. I know you, you guys are working a lot, but here, as I see this, you know, it just screams out at me to understand what is, what is the number, whether it's the cost per student or with a given cost per student, the number of students that would cause it to be, you know, not accretive, as you're saying that it is. Because you're saying it's very, it's very conservative, and to make that statement accurate, I think you need to understand what that analysis looks like. Because from, from back there, it didn't feel very conservative. And when you just took down those numbers, as an example, with two hundred and fifty-six kids, and I'm just seeing this stuff for the first time, my, my head knows that typically about ten percent of those kids have special needs. Those kids cost more. Out of two hundred and fifty-six kids, and I'm not saying anything bad about those kids, they need, they need their services, they're saying as we look at these types of issues. With two hundred and fifty-six kids, probably two or three of them need to be out of district. That alone is three hundred thousand dollars per year. So I don't know how these numbers came between the NICE Ed number or the, or the, the one that you got from CCSD, but either way, that's why, you know, I think it's important to understand at what point do we get in trouble and-
I get, I get your, I get your point.
Have that, but, you know, so, that was the question there. In terms of the places that are available for parking within one mile, the, what comes, what jumps to my mind is, does this mean that Hunts Lane is beginning to become the parking, the parking place for, is that, is that allowed use on Hunts Lane for residential parking for any buildings that are built within the hamlet? Because that's the only place that I know that has probably some of the more, like, maybe some of the more flexible land?
So if I understand your question, and Sabrina, tell me if I'm right, Hunts Lane has to provide enough parking for its residents. It can't park out, give up all its parking for a-
Do you mean Joan Corwin Way now?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay.
My apologies.
Correct, Jeremy.
The, the Joan Corwin Way, will those buildings be more valuable, will that land be more valuable? I don't know what the land, land cost is there to be, to be used, but is that an area that could be used? Because I'm trying to think where, I don't know where else you're going to build parking spots.
I think the response in part to that is, Rob, how many, are you, the, I think the big picture is ultimately, should the future town board and the community want to develop more than just what private property is? You're sitting on a, a parking lot that right now, for example, is generating a fraction of what it can, it's on the rolls, but it's not on the rolls because it's not generating any money. But to, to assert that you genuinely believe, and I disagree with you, maybe you would, that there is going to be a parking structure that people aren't going to be able to really get to, it's going to be very difficult to get to, that a builder is going to somehow market that to people and say, "You've got to park your car here, we're going to have to get there." I mean, I, you know, you're also assuming that enough land, land lots are brought together, and once that happens, the planning board gets involved. So, so I, I get your point, I just-
I'm just asking the question, is that allowed to be used there? I, I'm not saying that they're going to do that or not, I'm just asking the question. I don't even know if it's zoned for that or not.
I would assume, I don't know off the top of my head, I believe-
That, that's really the only question there, because I can't think of anyplace else in the, in the hamlet where they, where they could put it. So my question was, was that, is that a place that's, that is zoned where they could build garages? Or just parking right in the land? I don't know.
We'll get that, we'll get that answer. I mean, that's an easy, whatever it's zoned, we can figure out if it's zoned industrial or commercial or residential. Sure, it's probably a combination. It's probably a combination.
In terms of the, the question, and I guess this one's for Ed, on the FAQ about the legal risk for the seventy-two acres, I'm sorry?
It's zoned industrial, general.
Okay. So does that mean you can put, you can put a parking garage there?
I have to look up the uses.
Okay. In terms of the fact, the fact pattern, the fact, the FAQ on our litigation risk and the cases that you cite, do any of them have a fact pattern where you have a SECR for seventy-two acres, but you're only legislating a subset of that? Because it seems like a very unique fact pattern. Maybe I'm wrong, that happens all the time, but it seems like a pretty unique pattern where any other case that you're using to kind of say, "Well, this is a comp," would be a difficult comp to kind of use this for comfort.
I'm pretty sure that in none of those cases that they have a scenario-
Okay.
-as you're describing.
That's what I thought, I wanted to give you the benefit of the doubt to ask. You mentioned for the CCSD, the new apartments, and trying to draw a contrast between where was the lack of concern about the new apartments, the basements, and comparing that to new, brand-new apartments, brand-new units going in, in the hamlet. I don't think that's a really apples-to-apples comparison. It seems like more that you just want to take a dig at Vicki sitting back here, because she mentioned her name like five or six times, maybe somebody else has the count, but I don't think the analysis between the incremental students that are going to come in between a four-bedroom or three-bedroom house and the basement and a additional brand-new apartment is an apples-to-apples comparison. It's just an observation, you can take it for what you want, but, you know, that's something we're going to spend time on.
I'd encourage you to, to watch, watch that video and certainly make your own assessment.
I'm just taking the facts as you're presenting them here. The traffic that we studied in, in like September of two thousand nineteen, was there, what was the construction level still from the infrastructure project at that point in time? Was it, was it all gone? I don't remember it being done that soon, but maybe I'm wrong.
November.
It was, it was all done, and I certainly wouldn't use the word soon in, in that sentence, but yes, it was finished by then.
So it was, it was all finished? And the new light was in as well? Okay.
If I may confirm that in the IG District, public garages are allowed as long as they are as twenty-five feet from a residential neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you. In the, in the latest draft that you put down, it talks about, this is in two-way land uses, it talks about the town hall, that the town board is still considering further reducing the east side of North Greeley Avenue to three stories. Is there any update on that?
Reducing three stories on the east side? I think we're generally in consensus for that, if not completely in consensus.
So it's still, it's, it's something that's in consensus, and that would be addressed in, in the, in the code?
Correct.
Okay. So in the environmental review, is that, is that assumed to be three stories or four stories in the environmental review?
It was studied as four.
Four, okay. So, we talked about, I guess it's on page ninety-four.
There's also studied five-story buildings, we're also studying two.
I'm not sure they're there, though.
I know, I thought they were. No?
No.
Just the four to-
On page ninety-five, in the second paragraph, it talks, it says nevertheless, it is acknowledged that the DGIS examined the possibility of four-story residential development within a proposed F-four form-based sub-district. The town board believes that at four stories, that's new language, the proposed FBC adequately mitigates visual and other potential adverse environmental impacts, the various provisions, and so on and so on. And the reason why I read that was, as part of the SECR analysis, we're looking at four stories throughout town except for there were a couple of blocks at the lower part of King that are going to be three stories. And Lauren, I know that, looking back in your, I believe it was November twentieth, and it was the board's kind of, the feel of the board, sense of the board about what you, somebody from you? What, how you felt town should look, and you were pretty, I believe adamant that you wanted to see no more than, than kind of two stories kind of on-
Yeah.
-South Greeley Avenue.
Yeah, I still stand by that.
Okay. And Lisa, you also said that you-
I, I consider that, and just as, just some background on that, just looking at Malta's code, they consider that sort of the parade grounds, if you will, sort of like, you know, where the Ragamuffin Parade is, and, and essentially, I, I consider that the heart of downtown, and, and for me, you know, unfortunately, my term ends in December, so I won't have a say in that legislation, but as it relates to just the composition of downtown, I can see how, you know, the number of, limiting the number of stories in the heart of downtown is, is much more attractive, and sort of having four stories, you know, on North Greeley and then three stories on the other side just architecturally makes sense to me.
No, and, and I, I agree with you, and I took a lot of heart when you said that, and I believe that, that that's how you feel, and Lisa, you made similar comments in that same meeting, that you too did not want to see any kind of sizable buildup kind of on South Greeley Avenue. And yet I'm troubled by the fact that if we issue a finding statement or an FG, FG EIS that blesses environmentally the impact of having four stories all along South Greeley Avenue, and somebody can cut me off if, if that's incorrect, because I think for the most part, it's correct, especially on every place that they're building, it's not the place, I don't know if it applies to the gas station or the parks and so forth, but certainly on the east side of the street, that seems to be exactly what at least half the board said they did not want to see.
Well, my understanding of the environmental review is to show what the capacity is. The actual legislation is the code in which the law requires the builder to uphold to. Am I understanding that correctly, Ed?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
And the, the capacity in certain type, but it's also supposed to look at, you know, what is the environmental impact? And you were-
Right, and so we're, we're establishing that there are no negative adverse impacts to the environment, but as it relates to the code, the law, that is up to the future town boards to decide on. Am I, am I missing something?
You're getting it.
Okay, so Ed, can you just go through that with, with Rob? Because I just, I don't, I want to make sure that I'm on this, on the right page here.
I think view shed and things like that are part of the environmental impact, no?
Things like what?
Like view shed and, and-
Of course.
Okay. So that's what I'm talking about. Because whether the street, whether we, we can disagree about traffic and things like that, but we're signing off now, and you know how important I think your vote is, because I think it's very important, that we're signing off now that the environmental impact of four stories all along South Greeley is okay. And I know, you don't think it's okay? I don't believe you do. I don't believe you think it's okay. I'm not sure how Jeremy and Lori say, I'm not saying they do or they don't. But the idea of signing off that four stories along South Greeley, along Lower King, and on the top of the King Street Hill is all okay from an environmental impact, to me is just, it's a non-starter. And so-
But Rob, you just confirmed with Ed that even though the finding statement says this, all that matters is what the law says. Otherwise, laws would be arbitrary.
That's not true.
Am I understanding that correctly, Ed?
We're not, we're not actually at the finding statement. I think what you're describing, that type of conclusory statement, is something that you may or may not see in a finding statement.
Well, and maybe I'll, I'll be pleasantly surprised, and I'll jump for joy, and that'll be good, but it starts here. This is kind of the building blocks of getting to the finding statement.
This is about fleshing out information, and this particular process is about answering questions that were raised by members of the public and interested agencies during the public hearing on the DG EIS.
Right.
And I say that, I know everyone knows that, but we, we're getting very far afield, you know, and not, I'm not criticizing you, but some of the comments have, and, and they've been good comments in some cases and have elicited, what I think have been pretty productive conversations, but conversations that are a little bit premature.
But I think I've, and maybe it doesn't make a difference.
Rob, can I interrupt you for one second, because I just want to clarify. This process for the FG EIS, just to confirm, we're studying the largest build-out, right? Let's say-
It's one of the alternatives, yes.
Okay. When we, the next step before we get to legislation is adopting a finding statement.
Correct.
Okay? And in that finding statement, we could say four stories is too much, and there is a significant environmental impact, the finding statement will only approve three.
That's a possibility.
Okay.
Well, like I said, I am not a land use-
I just knew there was like a second, a syndrome step.
I'm not a land use lawyer, and I don't know how flexible that finding statement can be, and I hope it can be very flexible, because I get concerned right now, because the FG, the DGIS is the base building block, the FG EIS and the acceptance of it is the next step in it. And every time that things are, remain as part of those, as part of that document that are troublesome or concerning to residents, that's a bad thing for those residents if they're still concerned. And the sooner they get out, the more comfort that, that they get. So if you want to say it's premature, fine, but this is my concern, that we're getting to, we're getting to this issue about, we're about to get to the form of accepting FG EIS, and some of these things which you still, I know you both don't like, are still in here, and that concerns me, and, and I don't know how to get them out of here at this point, but, you know, it, it certainly concerns me. The, and I haven't come up once to one of these things, so little leniency, please. On page one oh one, there's a section about, it's response to question B fourteen. I don't have the original question because that, that wasn't part of, part of the black line. This is, but it's on page one oh one, and it talks about, you know, the fact that the existing commercial zoning has been in place for over thirty years. In the past thirty years, has been very little positive change to the Chapua Hamlet. I disagree with that one hundred percent. I can't imagine that statement being accurate. I don't think that any of you would think that's, that statement is accurate. If, if you don't think that the things that I've seen happen in the past seven, eight years have all, have been down in the, in the hamlet, have been positive, I think it's night and day how it looks. I can show you pictures of how the street looks. I, we just went through a terrible flooding exercise, flooding event, which I think was made much better by investments that we made, but I think the hamlet has a lot of positive change. I really object to that, to that, that level of response. I don't know if any of you object to it, but I think it's, the hamlet's a lot better than it was thirty years ago, just because for years and years, we put off any investment in the hamlet and the infrastructure or on top, doesn't mean things haven't changed in the past seven or eight years, because they have. I believe that Chapua Hamlet actually looks better now than I've ever seen it during my entire sixteen years as a resident here, through, through a combination of both what's happened underneath the streets, on top of the streets, the beautification stuff, all these things look good, and the picture that was in Westchester- and the picture that was in Westchester Magazine, I think, you know, really brought that out. So I really would ask you to reconsider that language there, that very little positive change to the Chappaqua hamlet. And then beneath that, in the paragraph next to that, talks about, "There appears to be a misconception that the town is relinquishing its control by changing the approval process, and this is the part where you're taking out the planning board and putting in yourself, Sabrina, in terms of the development department." And it goes through, in pretty great length, all the different things that the planning board does. And I'm not going to read them here, because I don't want to take up everybody's time, but, you know, those were really, it's on page one oh one, really important things that I think residents take a lot of comfort from. I'm not saying that process couldn't be improved, but then it says, "In the form-based code, these considerations are addressed prescriptively." I think it's just a huge leap, the idea that you can anticipate every single situation that's going to come up, most of which you can't document, because they happen, you know, on the fly, and say, "Well, we don't need the planning board anymore." And there's a part here, too, that says, now I'm at the two A land use on page forty-nine, that says, "Any project," this is the fourth bullet point down, "says, 'Any project involving a re-subdivision of lots which create a buildable lot exceeding half an acre in size, which after completeness review, will require planning board approval for such applications.'" But if I understand, unless it's changed, right now, unless there's a combination of lots, the planning board is not involved in anything in the current six acres. Is that correct, still?
Unless there's a combination of lots that together exceed a half an acre.
Right. Is that still the situation? So right now, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, there are no lots, unless there's a combination above half an acre, where the planning board will be involved in anything that's going to happen under the first area of the form-based code. And maybe we all hate the planning board, maybe we want to get them out of our lives, but that's what's going to happen here, from my perspective, because, and I think this is where I think some of these statements, whether it's here, or sometimes whether it's in the newsletter, are just generally, because they leave out really important points like that. Because we can put in the idea that, well, the planning board's still going to be involved. One of the things that one of the slates put out, that we're going to preserve the role of the planning board. Right now, the planning board is completely cut out, absent other actions that may or may not happen from development on the North Greeley Corridor. And I believe the Hakeem property is about an acre, I think it's about an acre, and I think the Wrightier property, about point six eight acres, so they're both pretty large properties relative to the size of properties downtown, and they're not involved. And I find that concerning. Last thing I'm going to do is, I'm looking at the last letter of the letter that was sent to the town board, it's September twenty-ninth, on page four, last page, page four oh four, number three.
I'm sorry.
So it's the letter that was sent by the CCSD to the town board, September twenty-ninth, 2021, and it's page four oh four, and it's number three.
I'm with you.
Okay, well, you tell me when you got it. Okay. So a couple of weeks ago, we had a conversation about the flexibility in doing different things in terms of putting thresholds in, which, as I mentioned, I think is really important, because I think, you know, we have six acres, some people are happy about the six acres, some people aren't. I think most people want to see something done. A lot of, a lot of people are very nervous about the idea of signing off on the environmental impact on seventy-two acres, given all the variability that can happen over time, and there's a certain amount of hubris in saying that we can really nail that down right now. And some of the threshold issues are all very soft. In my mind, they're very soft, in terms of when you actually get by them, or when you don't. And the CCSD, from my, or their council, at least, has made a very constructive type of argument, which talks about some hard thresholds. And I don't, you don't take orders from me, obviously. I think we like each other, I think we're friends, but you don't work for me, you work for the town and for the town board. But I really would request the town board to ask Keenan Bean to investigate every single possible flexible way that we might consider, doesn't mean you have to approve it, but might consider ways that issues like this might be addressed, to put some hard standards about when, if this does pass, we could move forward. I think it would add a lot of comfort to the community in whatever iteration comes out of this, as part of the finding statement. That's all I got. I appreciate your time. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. If you want to make comments, or something like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Adam Stalero from Sciapageant Roselle, for the Chappaqua Central School District. So I want to start on a positive note. The red line that came out on Friday includes a change, includes a threshold, or mitigation, rather, which is to let the school, to let the school district know when residential development is being planned, and to require residential developers to include an analysis of how many school-aged children may be developed, or may result from the development, and to share that with the school district. So I think that's something we requested in our letter. I think that's a positive development, so I want to thank the town board for that. The red line that came out today, you know, obviously, it came out four hours, or something like that, before the meeting. And I feel like, even though this meeting was postponed from last week, we're now still running after trying to, like, catch up to each other and have a conversation that's happening over paper, instead of really, like, sitting down and having that conversation. So I understand that, you know, the intent behind this is to provide some analysis that the school district and many members of the public have been asking for, but I don't think, I don't think we're there, and I think there's more that needs to be discussed. You know, it's quite remarkable in the, in the analysis that came out on page thirty-five, where it says several times that it's basically unreliable, right? It's, undertaking this analysis is going to yield unreliable results. It's not possible with any realistic level of confidence, but we're going to give it to you in order to provide a response to comments, is what it says. I mean, basically, that says to me, "We're not going to do it well, but we are going to do it quickly, because you asked for it, and the end is here, and so we have to do something." I, I don't know what this is really worth. I mean, if it's saying in the FGIS that it's unreliable, but to try and make a little more sense of what happened here, and I don't know, Sabrina, if you could bring back up that slide that we were talking about with the last commenter? So essentially, the DGIS uses, used, or cited two different numbers in its analysis on the cost per student. So there was the NISED number, which was seventeen thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars per student, and then the other number was the number provided by CCSD, which was thirty-four thousand four hundred sixty-one dollars per student. The new red line doesn't use either of those numbers, and it also doesn't use the current NISED number, which is twenty-nine thousand sixty-nine dollars. Instead, it calculated a new number. This red line tells us a little bit about how that was calculated. I don't know the qualifications of the consultant who did that, and I'm not casting any aspersions on Kim Lee Horn, I just don't know who did that, and whether they do this all the time for other school district numbers. But it, the number looks suspicious to me, because it matches exactly what the tax revenue is going to be in a way that makes it come out all even in the end, and that feels suspicious. I don't think we're done having this conversation. I mean, there's another, there are a few more days. I think, you know, we heard tonight that the town board is interested in continuing a conversation with the school district, but I would think that the calculating of this number and deciding what to take out of it, and what to leave in, is a conversation that should have been had with the agency that has the expertise in this. So when you do use the current NISED number of twenty-nine thousand, the table on the next table, and on the next slide. The table on the next slide looks, oh, sorry, can you go one more? Okay. This table looks a lot different if you use the current NISED number without Kim Lee Horn subtracting out nine thousand dollars out of the per-student cost. And so the last commenter was asking, like, what's the break-even number? If you use the current NISED number of twenty-nine thousand, and you use the twenty-twenty-one tax numbers, right, so that's the column where, yeah, you use those numbers, right? The break-even is a hundred and ninety students. In other words, after a hundred and ninety students are added, the school district starts losing money, and if up to, if up to two hundred and fifty-six new students are added, then the school district, using the current NISED numbers, is down one point nine million dollars. And if you use the CCSD numbers of thirty-four thousand per student, then the school district's down three point three million. So that's, I'm down there in that last, on the cell on the far right bottom, right, where it says that the resulting surplus would be positive two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. Using the NISED numbers without taking out those nine thousand dollars per student, you get to, you know, minus one point nine million. So there's a big swing here, and I think it's, it would be helpful to have this conversation together, and to figure out what number, you know, what the actual number is, and I think that those numbers, from these various ways of looking at it, should be presented in the chart, so that it's clear that there may be an impact. And these numbers that you're presented with today just don't do that. They don't show the real impact, they're not conservative. I mean, you can, you can say in a EIS that you're being conservative, but you're not. I mean, the numbers, the numbers that are in there are not the conservative numbers, either from the CCSD or from NISED. So, you know, in the time that we have left before the board considers this, you know, we'd like to have a conversation about what the real number is, and what the table should show in the EIS.
Can I ask you a question? Is there, can you think of a reason, and maybe you have the answer, why, going back to two thousand and nineteen, when I asked specifically, if you use thirty thousand dollars as the number, and there's seventy new students, you could just multiply that to say, seventy new students times thirty thousand dollars to get your ultimate number to the district, where there was two BOE board members and the superintendent, who said very specifically, that's not, that doesn't work that way. So why would it work not there, and you can't look at it in that type of analysis, but now you're asking us to look at it here in this scenario? It has nothing to do with the number of students, but it has to do with the calculation of the dollar. So why didn't it work there, but now it has to work here? Do you have an answer to that?
I mean, I wasn't, I wasn't involved with the school district then, and I haven't watched that video, but I can take a guess, which is, if you're looking at, you know, a smaller number of students at a time, maybe it's easier to try and identify, like, what kind of students are coming in, what kind of impact they might have on the budget. If you're trying to forecast over fifteen years, it makes more sense to use an average.
By what kind of student do you mean? How many?
And how would you come to that conclusion?
What do you mean, by what kind of student?
How many, how many, what their needs are, whether, like, I don't, I don't know, I'm not going to guess at why, you know, like, it's true, every student is different, and if you have, if you're going to need to hire a new teacher, for example, because you're going over, you know, over a certain number of students, or you need to, you know, your classroom space is running out, what have you, I'm just speculating here, I'm just trying to, like, guess at why those two things might be different. But I think that once you get to forecasting out fifteen years, it might make more sense to use an average. Also, though, CCSD, in this instance, is only trying to make sense of what the town board has done in its DGIS, right? Like, the number, the average number per student is something that the town board did, and its consultants did. So if your question is, why didn't we make the same comment, like, a long time ago on the DGIS? I don't know.
Adam, can I, can I ask a question? I'll bring it, go ahead, Laurie.
No, that was me.
Oh, Sabrina, Adam, I'll just bring it forward to the Chazen report, which was on your watch. Can you explain to the board what categories of expenditures were backed out of the Chazen reports per pupil calculation, because from what we could see, virtually, the entire budget was in there.
I can't. I've only had to look at this, and I wasn't involved in the Chazen report, so I don't know.
Could I address a couple of the points before you move on?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, go ahead, Bonnie, sure.
A couple of points. Yeah, Kim Lee Horn, he specifically worked on many, many EISs over thirty years, and this is not a new methodology, to go to the New York State Education Department website, and not take the overall number, but the financial reports that are in there. It's only a page or two, it's very straightforward, it has a certain, the first level of expenditures, as Sabrina outlined, and is listed in our write-up, are standard methodologies to use for students, because there's a lot of categories of expenses that a school district expends that aren't going to be affected at all by one student, ten students, twenty students, even. You mentioned some of the threshold issues, like adding a new teacher, or expanding classrooms. Those obviously are important expenses, and would affect a school district, but there's so many other factors that involve, and the adjusted number is why we went with not the original, the DGIS showed in NISED number and a school district number that we got from the school district. And then the FGIS just takes the NISED number, looking at it again, but looking at the twenty-twenty-one, what was posted there. So that's why there's three different numbers. But it really is a common methodology, I would say, to make an adjusted number in trying to assess the environmental impacts. And in being conservative, I think Sabrina's main point was probably that the nine hundred ninety-seven units is the ultimate build-out, which has been, you know, reiterated, that it needs to be studied in an EIS. And I think backing off to the threshold break-even points makes a lot of sense, and certainly, that's something that the board should be considering to maybe make a more specific threshold, than, as the other commenters mentioned as well, as a more generalized one, but that's for the board to decide.
In the DGIS, Bonnie, did that seventeen thousand dollar per student number, was that also adjusted in a similar way from the NISED website, or was that, it was?
Yeah, so that's why the seventeen compares more to the twenty, you know, the adjusted numbers. But the thirty-four was the number that we got directly from the school district. And then I believe the number in the Chazen study was around the same, but it was thirty-five or thirty-six. It was, I think, an updated number for the school district.
I guess my point with, you know, having a conservative analysis, is that you would, I mean, look, it's a big swing from what's on the bottom right of that chart, as, you know, showing a modest gain, to if we're wrong about the numbers, having a two million dollar deficit. It's a big swing, and I think it's just important, if you say you're conducting a conservative analysis, to look at what the potential impact might be, and just be aware of, like, where that leads us.
Can you, can you...
And the only other point I was just going to say was that the number of students used, we've used, we showed three different scenarios. We didn't just stick with the ninety-six students, as the DGIS reported, we went with the one fifty and the two fifty-six to show that range.
No, certainly, having a two fifty-six on that sheet is conservative, although I know there are members of the public who disagree with both the town board and the school district about whether that number is realistic.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts on this. I'm hoping that you could give me a little insight into the use of that thirty-four thousand dollar number, where the full budget of the school district's divided by the number of students, and the appropriateness of that.
I don't know that that's how that was derived. I know that's what's in here. Again, I've only had this for a couple of hours. I haven't even had time to sit down with my clients on this.
I mean, that's not, that number's not from there. The district number's the district number, so...
No, I know, but the...
Months, no, months ago.
No, I know, but this is the first time I'm seeing the town board's consultants say, "Well, this is how this was derived, and we don't think that's right." And I haven't had a chance to talk to my clients, or our consultants, about how that works. But I think that that's a conversation that we should have together over the next week to figure out what the right number should be in this chart, and I... And I don't, we haven't had that conversation.
Adam, if I may, I'd like to point you to information that was provided to my office by John Chow, um, and, and when we were collecting information for the DGES. That number was, um, in the DGES as provided to us by the school district.
No, I, I understand that. The, the question, the question was, how is that number derived? And the answer is, I don't know.
And, and I don't wanna put you on a wild goose chase. I mean, I'm comfortable with the numbers that, that Bonnie explained are what is done in the regular course of business. And when I looked at those thirty-four thousand, based on my past experience in two thousand and nineteen, and based on what it appears to be state aid is thrown in there too, which is not paid by our residents, um, it's roughly between nine and ten million dollars. But I, it, it's certainly something I'd like to know, but nonetheless, I, I'm comfortable with, with what we have in terms of those dollars. But we have another week to, to, you can certainly share what you want to do. I'm disappointed that I was told to foil when you're standing up here telling you wanna work with us. Very, it just doesn't, it seems illogical to me, but, um, nonetheless, we have another week.
I, I have to say, I mean, I, it may be that our letter made the town board defensive, but the response in here was fairly aggressive in terms of going after the school district for like not wanting to work with you when my only experience has been reaching out to Keenan Bean, reaching out to staff and saying, let's, let's have a conversation about it. So I know there's a history here, but like that doesn't mean it needs to be the way it is going forward.
That's why I was hoping to get some more information. But we are where we are, and I'm curious for those numbers, and when we're listening, we have another week.
I think, yeah, I think the, uh, the specific, um, detail that was of interest is, is this year's enrollment and the breakdown for this year's enrollment. Um, I, I know we got the total number for the district, which was up by one student. Um, obviously, we're interested in, you know, in the trends and whether, whether, uh, there was a much greater net impact on the elementary schools and a reduction in high school students, I don't know. But, um, but I think that's a figure that should be easily accessible and shareable.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Good evening, I'm Victoria Tipp. I'm here as a resident, and as an individual board member, I'm not here to speak for the school board. So I just wanna make a few comments. So there are quite a number of issues that we can talk about, but I'd like to just focus on the per pupil student cost of thirty-four thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars. Uh, the town consultant and the town planner unilaterally decided that this could be disregarded, our number of thirty-four thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-one per pupil student cost. In doing so, they saw fit to quote me by name, which I believe is highly unprofessional and a complete mischaracterization of my words taken out of context in, in a situation that was much different from this one. But I will repeat what they quoted. I said, "The idea of allocating monies equally to each child is just a false paradigm. We can't look at it that way, and that is very true. For instance, it can cost much more than the average per pupil number. Per pupil cost allocates an average cost to each pupil equally. But we don't educate that way, we educate equitably. There's a difference between equal and equitable. One child requiring special education services with private placement can cost the school district upwards of a hundred thousand dollars for one child. That doesn't include transportation. These costs are mandated, and moreover, we want to provide services to our students that they require. The point is, there is no way to control what services will be needed. That doesn't mean you reduce the cost in your analysis, it's quite the opposite. The consultants also unilaterally decided that general support and debt service should be disregarded. This was in the redlined, uh, comments. They declared that they do not correlate to pupils, these costs. The fact is that these costs are a result of the investments we have to make in facilities and infrastructure to support the student population. I am not sure what gave them the idea that this should be disregarded. Had there been true collaboration with CCSD, we could have easily explained these facts. The consultants and town planner took extra days to analyze school finance, but they never contacted our administration, the true experts in school finance, to work with them. Instead, they decided that the SED average was good enough for our students. But we don't have an average school district. The consultants said they used a common methodology, but this is not a common school district. People move here for an above-average school district. The high school, the high taxes they pay reflects that. I'm sorry to say that there has been a complete disregard for the school district. And our district is the real reason people move here. We educate your children. We attend to their academic and socio-emotional health to the best of our ability. Our administrators undertook a Herculean task of keeping our schools open during the continuing global health pandemic. When you disrespect the school district, you disrespect, disrespect all children of our school district. Our children, that is who we serve. The children of the school district have no voice here, so we're speaking for them, and you should listen. We desperately need a local government that is ready to truly serve its people and collaborate with others with an understanding of good governance that is truly representative and respectful. Thank you.
Ms. Tipp, I'd kindly ask that you do not conflate questioning the statements of the school board members and the superintendent as to cost per student, um, students in the district with disrespecting the school district. I, I don't think anyone, whether you have a child or not, uh, would be, uh, unable to say how terrific and amazing our teachers and administrators and staff were and continue to be. As a father of three children, I certainly congratulate them and, and welcome everything that they've done. I'm extremely grateful. So I'd, I'd kindly ask that you not conflate those two issues. One is, is whether or not we are a usual or normal school district, and we're certainly above that. We, uh, pride ourselves in our, on our academics and our efforts by our schools. That is not the question here. The question here is the dollars, the question here is projections, um, not whether we appreciate what school board members or school staff or school administrators have done in the past or are doing now. So, thank you. Okay.
Mike Feinberg, Millwood. I just wanted to comment on the logic of the school numbers. The seventeen thousand that I see we found it on the, um, uh, state website, it's specific for Chappaqua. It's considerably higher than the state average and the county average. But from a logic standpoint, what we're looking at is marginal costs. The superintendent, the administration, the school buildings, they're not changing with fifty, a hundred people. So there's a certain logic that makes sense. You wouldn't use the full cost. And as Jeremy said, we just looked, the school budget, approximately ten percent of the school budget comes from state aid.
Eight percent, seventy percent.
No, and, and county sales tax. It's about ten percent. Um, so there's that factor, which has nothing to do with what we're talking about here. So I think there's a pretty good logic to the, using a seventeen thousand dollar number when you look at the marginal cost of adding fifty, a hundred students to a district with the number of students we have. So I think this, I think we're on target. Obviously, we should have a conversation with CSD and discuss those numbers, but certainly it shouldn't be the full thirty-four thousand, that makes no sense at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening. Um, once again, I have to speak for Ben Herman. This was not planned, his dog got sick a few minutes ago.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
We're all hoping that she'll be okay.
Yes.
We hope you're gonna be okay, Molly. Um, okay, so let me read Ben's sort of telegraphic points, and then I'll, I have quick remarks tonight. So Ben Herman, um, rents used in tax analysis are more than ten percent higher than the rents you used in the developer profitability analysis, suggesting that you're overstating the tax revenue. Your failure to include the AFFH units will also result in lower tax revenue than you're projecting. Candidly, your numbers on multiple topics continue to be highly biased. How do one-bedroom rents at four thousand a month and two-bedroom units at fifty-two-hundred increase housing diversity? That's not achieving housing diversity. Um, on student generation, the bedroom breakdown and student generation continues to not reflect unit breakdowns observed and proposed here. The consultants claim a twenty-seven percent two-bedroom ratio is appropriate, which grossly understates the potential. Ninety-one Bedford has more than fifty percent two-bedrooms and the dens we've, we've heard about. Um, I'll also remind you that, uh, Mr. Feinberg's letter, the, the owner of the Rite Aid property, fifty, uh, North Greeley Avenue, uh, Mr. Feinberg's letter to the town regarding the Rite Aid site implies a one-point-four children-per-unit ratio, about six times that which is being projected per unit here. Um, student generation, as we've heard from the last several speakers, is one of the most significant drivers of potential school tax increases. The aforementioned facts cannot be ignored and render your unit breakdown and student projections inadequate and incomplete. Regarding the financial feasibility analysis, it's extremely concerning that the consultants continue to provide inaccurate and biased information, which the town appears to be accepting, that supposedly justifies the need for four-story development, not just in North Greeley, but throughout South Greeley Avenue and Lower King Street, because the FGEIS covers those full seventy-two acres. Four stories is not justified by the data nor by real-world, uh, examples. It's simply a tool for you to enhance developer, develop, developer profits. Three stories is financially feasible. Okay, so that was Ben. Um, mine are relatively quick. We heard Supervisor Salan say a few minutes ago, trouble getting data out of the school district. Um, I requested data in comments that I submitted in the DGES round in March. Um, I'm still waiting for that data, those co- uh, comments were ignored. Um, they don't show up in the FGEIS.
From the school district?
No, no, not from the school district, traffic stuff, et cetera. Um, okay, so a few minutes ago, oh, Scott Levine, one forty-nine King Street. Um, a few minutes ago, one of the town representatives said, quote, "The truth is that we will never see the max build-out. That's extremely categorical, and in my opinion, it's misleading. There's no way for any of us to know that, so that can't be known. You don't know that, I don't know that, we can't know that. It's irresponsible to say that."
So Scott, you're speaking as yourself now, is that right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, good, thank you.
When I put my phone down, that was me transitioning from Ben to Scott.
You need a hat.
Um, I know, it's the second time in a row. Okay, so yes, speaking as Scott. Um, so yeah, that, that kind of categorical and misleading language, I mean, the whole point of SIKR is disclosure. You're disclosing it because you're enabling it. Um, and an example of why, um, I think it's unfair to say we will never see the max build-out is the Rite Aid site that Ben mentioned is in his comment. Um, that letter from Doug Feinberg, the owner of that site, um, says that he proposes to build fifty apartments. But the max build-out only shows twenty-two apartments on that entire block, which is not just that property, but a row of properties that, that's surrounded. So, I mean, that, that sort of categorical language is really, really misleading to the public, and I think it's corrosive, uh, of the public trust. Um, okay, so this past Friday's community e-newsletter that was published by the town supervisor contained a series of claims alleging to be correcting falsehoods about the Form-Based Code. And this is important because we're now discussing the completeness and the adequacy of the planning documents. The first of these claims in the newsletter was that the town does not plan to extend the Form-Based Code to Millwood. It said, quote, "The town cannot rezone for similar density in Millwood because it lacks the infrastructure such as sewer," end quote. Well, allow me to quote from official documents that were formally submitted by the town to New York State after the completion of the comprehensive plan. Quote, "In Millwood, the capacity site yield analysis will be balanced with the feasibility of sewer-ing the Hamlet area. In order to realize the potential outcome, the town will need to promulgate new land regulating plans, Form-Based Zoning," end quote. Um, Form-Based Zoning is another name for Form-Based Code. So in summary, the town's documents show that they have indeed considered Millwood to be part of the Form-Based Code proposition, though now with the community uproar about the consequences in Chappaqua, they are now downplaying this.
If I just may, just to respond to that, you, you're saying that was from the comprehensive plan?
No, no, that was after the comprehensive, following the comprehensive.
Correct. So, so what we're doing now has nothing to do, and nor did it ever have anything to do with Millwood. There is many infrastructure issues in Millwood that would have to first be addressed. There is no plan that I am aware of that was discussed, that we sat down and collaborated, say, how are we going to have any Form-Based Code? These are two different items, these are two totally separate items. So I stand by that, it's not misleading. You would have to build out an enormous infrastructure project to make that happen. I'm not aware of the dollars or the pursuit of that right now, so I think that's a fair statement, especially in the context of what was said, that there's reason to believe, I don't believe the exact words, that that is what's going to happen, and that's the plan. So, um, I stand by that, but, but we can agree to disagree, but I think it's pretty clear and pretty accurate.
Okay. Do you disagree with that quote? I mean, that, that is a town document.
I'm gonna answer the question or statement I just said, I'll just say again, that is not an accurate description.
It's a, it's a, it's a straight, it's a straight quote, it's from an application.
But you're, 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 you're comparing two different issues. It's a generalized statement that if you ever decided to do something here, you would have to do X.
No, it's not, you, you were...
It's not, it's not, it's not saying we are planning to have a Form-Based Code for that dis- for that area of town. In no way is that saying that.
This is from a planning document that was planning for, I mean, come on. Okay, so everyone can judge for themselves the likelihood that if the Form-Based Code proponents somehow manage to put this in place in Chappaqua, that it will stay limited to there rather than be expanded when developers come knocking on our town's other neighborhoods, such as Millwood.
This, uh, exercise only applies to Chappaqua. Okay, just clarifying, this exercise only applies to Chappaqua.
Scott, I think what he's talking about is that the, the supervisor's report that's put out, which is not reviewed by the full town board, is...
It should be, to be honest with you.
Inaccurate.
It's, it's...
Or misleading, I think he's saying.
We, we can go back and forth, I'm, I'm content and happy with it, I have no issue with it, I think it's accurate and fair.
It probably should be reviewed by the full town board.
My quote from planning documents is direct, it's a straight quote.
It's saying there are facts, but it's not true.
I noticed that you had done that with Rob Greenstein, you questioned his, his supervisor reports.
I might have reviewed them.
Um, all right, so anyone on the, uh, screen on, uh...
Yes, we do have some people. I'm going to open Victoria Elzepidi's line, just unmute yourself, please. Victoria, you just need to unmute yourself.
Well, my call, because I have no comments at the moment.
Okay, so we'll move on to the next person.
Victoria, maybe put your hand down.
Okay, the next person is Roger Klepper, I'm going to open your line. Just unmute yourself, please.
Hi, did, did that work?
Yes, we hear you, Roger.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So you can hear good, and you can hear, I'm actually... Good, so, no problems hearing, it's all good?
I hear you.
We hear you.
Super, thank you. Um, okay, I'm, I'm gonna start off with a very, very quick question. Um, and once again, looking back to the, uh, supervisor's report. One of the twenty comments in there was, um, that this is not, that this is not a construction plan, the, um, the Form-Based Code. For, just real quick question, for the purpose of the EIS, help people understand why, why is that important and relevant?
Hey, Roger, maybe talk a little louder? Yeah, and I actually, I don't know if it's just me, but I noticed some background, um, noise in the background, Roger.
Yeah, that's, 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 that's the GPS speaking, so, um, hopefully, sorry about that, um...
I hope you're not driving.
No, I, trust me that I am not driving. So, in the, in, in the twenty facts, one of them was... So, in the 20 facts, one of them was stated that this is not, this is not a construction plan. It would, for the purpose, in terms of the EIS, helpful for me to, I mean, obviously that's factually correct, but in terms of the EIS, why is that important or relevant?
Is that a rhetorical question? It's an environmental review, I'm confused here. It's an analysis, environmental review of the impact of potential development.
I think the question is, why is it important to distinguish between a project-specific review and a generic review? Because I understood the question.
Yeah, that, you know, presumably, you know, obviously there's a rendering, right, that people saw, that for the 72 acres, it was very, very alarming, and, you know, from the beginning, it was, you know, pointed out that this is not a development plan. But my question is, in terms of the analysis, and I think this gets to, you know, some of Lauren's comments earlier, in terms of your analysis of this, shouldn't your analysis be, like, based on an assumption that this 72 acres is going to be developed? That when you file a finding statement, is your analysis any different or the standard of your analysis? And the detail that you look into, issues of the school district, the financials, every last detail, should that be any less for this than it would be if we're an actual development plan and you signed off on that finding statement and they're going to put in all 72 acres of what's in that rendering? Should your analysis be any different than that? Or should it be any less than that?
I'm not sure if I understand. And the full build-out is an alternative that's studied in the GEIS.
Right, but Lauren, since earlier, said, well, we could put hypothetically, we're not at the finding statement stage, but she, you know, kind of thought it was important to differentiate between that and the actual zone. Whereas, you know, when you file the finding statement, it's basically saying you have to be as comfortable with those 72 acres as you would be if that was an actual construction plan. Right? I mean, I think that's important, because I think Lauren's comment, Lori, Jeremy, and Lisa, as they go about this, I think it's important to set the standard, you know, as they view all of these outstanding issues, the financial implications, the environmental implications, whether we're comfortable with four stories or three stories, that's not something that, like, when you file that finding statement, it's saying it should be a level of comfort, the same level standards as if it were a construction plan, right?
But I think the difference, if I could add a little bit, it's not a construction plan in the sense that a private landowner is bringing forth a specific building with, you know, certain, this is the way it's going to look, this is how big it is, this is how many bedrooms it has. It's a law, and the way, only way to evaluate the law is to apply some sort of a build-out, a maximum build-out, to assess the maximum impact. So that's where the rendering that you referred to came from and all of the assumptions that are described in the DEIS and the FG EIS about that maximum build-out. And from there, you can get a number of people, gallons per day of sewage, and, you know, number of cars, all of those different facts, and that's where the board, the number, the potential significant impacts. And if there are significant impacts, how they're mitigated or not mitigated, and that's when you end up with the conclusions and the finding statement. So I don't know if that helps, but...
So that's one hypothetical scenario, like the real estate consultant, took one building, did sort of a hypothetical analysis to assess the impact of three stories or four stories. So basically, the full 72-acre build-out is just one scenario, right? I mean, in fact, so the task
There were alternatives as well, yes.
Yeah, yeah, but, okay, I'm just looking at the 72-acre. So the task, I mean, if anything, the task is beyond that. You've got to be comfortable with, you know, call it 100 different scenarios. So that's where, you know, I think Mary Ann last week talked about the proviso, all of the different things that can happen that are different than the one then, than what's then the 72-acre kind of scenario that's included. But the analysis of that 72-acre scenario should be at the same level of comfort that you would, and the same depth of analysis regarding the school district, regarding the fire department services, the financial impact, that, you know, Lauren, Lori, Jeremy, and Lisa should be, their analysis should be commensurate with what it would be if we're an actual development project.
My short answer is that, and Ed, whatever is required to do, that's what's being done. If it was a construction project, it would be treated as, it would be a construction project, but it's not a, nonetheless, the environmental thresholds are being examined and that's what we're required to do, so.
If it were a construction project, there really wouldn't be a lot of unknowns and variables, but we don't have that on the table. What we have is zoning, and we have to make assumptions, and this is what Sabrina was getting at earlier, some informed guesses as to what kind of developments we're going to see and when. When you have a building going up, you know exactly what you're getting, that's not the case here.
Right, but that doesn't make your analysis any less.
Well, I think we have the point.
That makes it, that makes it greater, right?
I think the board has your point.
Yeah, I think it's clear, and we're not doing anything that's inconsistent, if you will, with other FG EISs.
No, no.
I mean, this is what we're doing, I mean, this is not a novel concept.
Right, and, well, and that is why, I mean, I think Scott's comment about saying the max build-out will never happen, or, you know, the comment in the 20 important facts saying it's not a construction plan, I think for the purpose of the EIS, that's actually an irrelevant thing. In fact, the fact that it's not a construction plan means that the level of analysis comfort that the community must have with this is actually greater than what it would be if we're a construction plan. So when all of you are thinking about this and you, you know, get to the point of a finding statement, that is the level of comfort, you have to be comfortable that that's the level of analysis that you have, that you've undertaken when you take that step.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's a helpful point, Roger, and I think that that is the exercise that we are undertaking at the moment, is our determination as a board, whether we have a completed DGIS or a set of information that informs our legislative choices.
So
So that doesn't necessarily mean, that doesn't mean, right, that we're obligated to make a legislative choice that applies to the whole study area. In fact, that is exactly what we're not doing. That the DGIS is the information tool that helps inform the legislative instrument.
I think we know where you are, and I appreciate the comment, I thank you, Roger.
Sure.
Okay, we have the next person, Mark Frye. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, do you hear me?
Yes.
Good, my name is Mark Frye. I live in Austin, but I followed the progress of your Form-Based Code in Chappaqua for a long time. I first went to Chappaqua in 1959, and I'm a 1966 graduate of Pleasantville High School, and I know Chappaqua well. We're involved in a similar zoning issue in Tarrytown. I should also mention, I'm a land use planner. I do what Bonnie Van Olson does, Gimli Horn, and I spend about half my time working for developers and probably more than half my time working in the public interest. And there are a couple of points I'd like to bring out. First of all, when I'm asked by a developer, what can I do, I'm looking at a particular five-acre piece of property in Chappaqua, New York, or anywhere else. The question is always, you know, what's the maximum I can build there? What can I do with it? So I look up the zoning code and do all of the calculations to determine what is the maximum unit count permissible, how many square feet of retail, all of that. It's been my experience that developers always do the maximum build-out permissible, that whatever your FG EIS determines is the maximum permissible in that total 72 acres will indeed be built. So you need to look at those, all of the impacts very, very carefully. The fact that your own school board is not on board with the fiscal impact analysis brings me to another point. Having written lots of DEISs myself and FSEISs, I worked very hard to make sure everything is accurate, but I've looked at a tremendous number of exactly the same kind of document done as it happens by some of the same consultants that you were using, and I found substantial errors. So I would advise you all to look very, very carefully at all of the evidence provided in terms of traffic counts, in terms of total net benefit to the school system, especially when you talk about units of apartments that are only providing a fraction of the cost that is borne by the school system. If you, another example, very close to home, I frequently go to Pleasantville to get some almond croissants, and every time in the last couple of months I arrive there, I see that enormous monstrosity, essentially, a block of five-story steel framing right in the middle of that village that I got to know and love. And there's just no question that all of this seemed on paper, what's being done in downtown Pleasantville right now, I would advise everyone on the board, all of you in Chappaqua, to go ahead and go over to Pleasantville, look at that steel structure, and imagine, imagine what that would look like along Greeley Avenue. So things that this whole Form-Based Code idea is something that is tremendously advantageous for developers. It dramatically increases the density that was allowed under your former code, into your current code, and I would advise you to move very cautiously indeed. And just to sum it up very briefly, having looked very carefully at what is proposed in your Form-Based Code, I would strongly advise the Board of Trustees not to adopt it. Continue the process, vet every single figure in it nine ways to Sunday, you'll get your findings statement, and based upon that statement, you should make a decision not to proceed with changing of your zoning. So thank you for allowing me to comment.
Thank you. Anyone else, Carrie?
Yeah, we have one more, Dana Gorlick, please unmute yourself.
Hi, Dana Gorlick, One North Bridge Terrace. I heard Acting Supervisor Salan say that whatever is required to do is being done. I would just argue that when the school board and other interested parties are asking for more time and asking to slow it down, that we should aspire to more than mediocrity. So with that being said, I'm asking the town board to dial it back and do a full analysis that's appropriate and meaningful, and with that, I'm going to yield the rest of my time to my husband.
Thanks. So I'll just add a comment. So when we are reassured that the max build-
Can you say your name?
Pardon?
Name.
Oh, my name is Mark Gorlick, and I also live at One North Bridge Terrace. When the town board reassures us that the max build-out will never occur, I think there's an implication there that the max build-out is thus a negative outcome and we don't want it to occur. And if that's the case, I still don't understand why we even allow such a possibility to be potential. So to argue that it needs to be done so that we can assess the project really just doesn't pass the smell test. If the max build-out is not a good thing, don't allow it. And then secondly, I think for the town council to, what appears to be happening, to disregard the school board, is kind of analogous to, say, the police department deciding to set fire to a building despite the fire department saying, please don't do that. I think in a civil community, this is just not acceptable. It's really incumbent on the town board to work hand and glove with the school board in our town for the benefit of the town, period. The town council must revise the entire FPC and plan it out in partnership and not in opposition to the school board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other hands raised, Carrie?
That's all for now.
Okay, thank you. All right, so Ed, we're going to adjourn this matter to next Tuesday to consider accepting this as complete, correct?
Yes.
All right, so let's do so, and
So Ed, are we getting any changes in between, or this is it?
Well, there's no new red lines or content that we're expecting to get from the consultant team, so at this, yeah.
Nothing we talked about today is going to be studied.
Well, studied, you know, by way of the traffic, is that, that was the one study that I heard.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I heard people, I didn't fully understand all of it, but I think people brought up significant questions about what metrics are being used to determine rental rate, which then went into taxes, which are not, they said, not based on reality, if I recall. So I'd kind of like to hear the answers, and maybe those need to be recalculated based on current actual situation.
Well, I think you have the responses that the consultant team came up with respect to school budget impacts, with respect to tax generation, and I know that you've got the Chazen Report that takes a different look at those issues, and I think at this point, it's up to the town board to look at those two analyses and determine where it believes, who got it right. All right, and town staff, my office will be available to answer questions. We can, you know, certainly deal with any open questions as of next Tuesday, when you meet again. I did hear there was, you had a comment with respect to, I think it was A1, and there was some language that I think you correctly pointed out was a little imprecise, when we talked about the Form-Based Code, and it was relating to the train station. Just using, by way of example, I think you could see some corrections, Lauren pointed out some typos in one of the, so that, you'll see some things of that nature by way of revisions, but I don't think anyone contemplates substantive changes at this point.
Okay, so Ed, we're just, we don't have to adjourn it, other than formally, we can just put it on the calendar for the 20, pardon me, the 12th.
Right, this is a work session, so we will plan to have a resolution on your October 12th agenda.
Thank you. Okay, so
Couple of administrative items?
Yeah.
You gotta go to the microphone, nobody can hear you.
Thank you, Sabrina. Thank you, Bonnie.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Thanks, Sabrina, feel better.
The meeting that's scheduled, I'm only asking because I have to make a meeting scheduled tomorrow for the county, the meeting is scheduled for November 10th as opposed to November 9th, is there a reason for that? It's on a Wednesday instead of a Tuesday?
I don't recall, do we have a budget that day? Was that a budget?
No, that's, that's October.
It may have just been a coordination issue or possible, is it a validity issue?
It must have been a conflict, I don't remember what it was. It must have been a conflict, I don't remember what it was.
But it is what it is.
I don't recall what it is off the top of my head.
So make sure it's, it's accurate.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, well, if it's, if it's not, we would, we would change it. I get it, I get, right, I get it, okay. Yeah, that's, the bottom line, it doesn't matter why, as long as it's accurate.
Uh-huh.
Someone will email you tonight, if it turns out it's not accurate.
Yeah. When is it, November? Yeah, I don't, I don't have the answer to that. And maybe that Sabrina has a, a meeting and could not be present, or, I, I just, I don't know off the top of my head.
You, you had that on your calendar too, as a reason?
I, I have it as a Wednesday, November tenth. Yes.
Yeah, we've had that on the calendar, on the schedule since the outset, so.
Yeah, that never changed, so.
Okay, so, administrative items.
Yep. So, sorry, here we go. We've got a resolution accepting a stormwater agreement and also a letter of credit for the performance guarantee. This is for seven sixty-seven King Street. This information came out at the request of the planning board, and the letter of credit is in the amount of five hundred and twenty thousand dollars to guarantee stormwater and other performance requirements under, under the planning board's resolution. The next is the authorization to award the bid for holiday lights with the discount, if we pay it by, I think, next week, Rob. It's, the lowest responsible bidder was twelve thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars. It's the same company that we've been using in the past, and what we're going to be doing is doing the large trees in the triangle and sixty-three lamp posts. We're actually doing them without the garland this year because that will allow us to keep the, the strands of lights on the lamp posts longer. The garlands were a big hit last year. The problem is, is that by the beginning of February, they're brown and they've got to be removed, and because they're intertwined, you can't just pull out the garland and leave the string of lights up. So we'd like to be, have the option of just leaving them a little bit longer in town. Last administrative item is the authorization to establish a capital project and budget for the Bedford Road pump station upgrade. We've already awarded this to Woodard Inc., for engineering services, but it's going to be the establishment of a one-point-five-million-dollar capital project to be able to cover the engineering and also the construct, the construction of the pump station. And that's all we have for, for work session. Does the board have any question on the administrative items? Then we're going to be going into our, our town board meeting. We have a couple of items on a consent agenda. Do we need a motion?
Motion to adjourn and commence the town board meeting?
I move to adjourn the work session and commence the town board meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, go ahead, Jill.
Any public comment?
Online.
Nothing online, Carrie?
Nothing, nothing online.
All right, any announcements?
No, I'll, I'll save them for-
I had, I had one.
You jumped in front of me, maybe I had a supervisor report.
Yeah, sorry, what?
Maybe I had a supervisor report this time.
Nobody even asked him.
So was there a comment?
No, 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 I have no supervisor report, no town administrator report, so I know you want to share something, go ahead.
Good, good. So, yeah, so I wanted to mention that Newcastle has been awarded a Tree City USA recognition, and I wanted to, in particular, share kudos to Kellen Cantrell, our assistant planner, as he prepared and submitted the town's application and all the supporting documentation that was, that was needed for our Tree City designation. The Tree City USA program is one of Arbor Day, the Arbor Day Foundation's oldest program, started in nineteen seventy-six with a vision for a greener, healthier America, and hoping that this initiative would inspire change on a nationwide level. The Tree City USA program provides communities with a four-step framework to maintain and grow their tree cover. It also gives them an avenue to celebrate their work, showing residents, visitors in the entire country that they're committed to the mission of environmental change. Newcastle received the annual Tree City recognition in 2020 by meeting the following standards: maintaining a tree board or department, which is served by the conservation board, having a community tree ordinance, which we have, our Chapter 121 tree preservation ordinance, spending at least two dollars per capita on urban forestry, which we met with tree plantings in 2019 associated with the streetscape project and glacier preserve, and celebrating Arbor Day, which the town board of Newcastle proclaimed on April 24th of 2020 for our 2020 designation. And I think we got like, it's like, four-year sign? And we got-
We got the flag.
We got a flag. I don't know where we're going to put the flag, but it's a very pretty flag for-
Maybe we can hang it on Town Hall or something.
I know, we need a place for it, but, very cool.
Very nice.
So congratulations to the town, and thank you to Kellen, and of course, all the others who support all the programming that qualified the town, like the conservation board and our environmental planner and Parks and Rec.
So I actually thought that you were going to remind everybody about the dedication of the Gene Craighead George.
Didn't get to that yet.
Oh, okay, go ahead. I jumped the gun, sorry.
No, that's okay, do you want to take it?
No, 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 go ahead.
Also, this Sunday at noon, there will be dedication of a new town park, the Gene Craighead George Park, I'm not near the microphone, sorry. And that has been part of this Homegrown National Parks Program, where the neighbors have invested their own sweat equity in cleaning up the park, although in recent weeks, they've gotten some support, some significant support from our Parks and Rec Department, and we're grateful for that, and hope that people come out for the dedication. This is the first new park to be dedicated in town in about seventeen years.
That's it? Seventeen years?
Yeah.
Thank you for all the people who are, you know, I think Jen Bounds was sort of spearheading that, among other people, so thank you very much. All right, so, Jill.
So we've got our, since there's no public comment and no one online, our consent agenda would be next week, go right into the resolutions. Do you, do we want to do anything about the opting out before we-
Yeah, do you want to, do you want to just briefly say, explain, the bottom line is, we're opting out for onsite cannabis use and onsite cannabis dispensaries. That does not preclude people from adhering to the law, whatever it may be elsewhere. And it does not preclude us from ultimately joining back in or opting back in whenever we do choose so, but if we fail to do it now, we lose that right to opt out. I think that's sufficient for everybody?
That's it.
Yep.
Okay, super. All right, so let's go to the resolution.
All right, I move to adopt the consent agenda as submitted consisting of authorization to hire part-time recreation attendants to recreation, resolution accepting stormwater agreements, seven sixty-seven King Street, resolution accepting letter of credit for performance guarantee, seven sixty-seven King Street, authorization to award bid holiday lights, authorization to establish capital project and budget for the Bedford Road pump station upgrade project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to accept the resignation of Doug Scott from the position of Recreation Supervisor within the Recreation and Parks Department effective October 21st, 2021. The town would like to thank Doug for his service.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Just, just a shout out to Doug, he's actually becoming superintendent over in Malpleasant. We wish him every success, and I'm hoping he comes and visits. We'll miss him.
Congratulations and good luck.
Absolutely.
I move to authorize the posting and hiring of the, for the position of Recreation Supervisor within the Recreation and Parks Department.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Who would have thunk it?
All right, I move to authorize the hiring of Jack Reese, the position of seasonal laborer within the Recreation and Parks Department at the hourly rate of seventeen dollars per hour effective October 6th, 2021.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. All right, Lori.
Okay. Move to adopt the following resolution: Whereas the town board of the town of Newcastle desires to opt out of allowing adult-use retail cannabis dispensaries and adult-use onsite cannabis consumption establishments within the town of Newcastle; and whereas a proposed local law was introduced on June 29th, 2021 to opt out of allowing adult-use retail cannabis dispensaries and adult-use onsite cannabis consumption establishments to locate within the town of Newcastle as authorized under Article IV of the Marijuana Regulation and Taxation Act; and whereas the town board held a duly notice, public hearings on the proposed local law July 13th, 2021, and continued the public hearing to September 21st, 2021, at which times all those interested had an opportunity to be heard, and the public hearing was closed on September 21st, 2021, but kept open for written comment; and whereas the proposed local law is a Type II action pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, Part 617.5, 26 and 33, is routine or continuing agency administration and management and adoption of policies in connection with, therewith, such that no further environmental review is required; and whereas the town board is fully familiar with the proposed local law, now therefore be it resolved that the town board hereby adopts the proposed local law to opt out of allowing adult-use retail cannabis dispensaries and adult-use onsite cannabis consumption establishments to locate within the town of Newcastle as authorized under Article IV of the Marijuana Regulation and Taxation Act, be it further resolved that this local law is subject to a referendum on petition in accordance with the Marijuana Regulation and Taxation Act and the procedures outlined in New York Municipal Home Rule Law 24, and thus may not be filed with the Secretary of State until the applicable time period has elapsed to file a petition or a referendum has been conducted approving this local law. Be it further resolved that the town clerk is hereby authorized to publish and post a notice within ten days from the date of this resolution, which shall set forth the date of the adoption of the act or resolution, and contain an abstract of such act or resolution concisely, stating the purpose and effect thereof, and indicating that such act or resolution is subject to a permissive referendum.
All in favor?
Aye. And thanks to Drew Gammels for all the work that she did educating the town board on this legislation.
On marijuana. Taxation. All right, so we're ready to adjourn, anyone?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.